All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, March 9, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. To those of you online, thanks for joining us there as well. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Here.
Starr?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Jensen?
Here.
Kylie?
Here.
Knightzert?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
All right, thank you, Tom. Counselors Jensen and Brecky join us remote tonight. And with us to give our invocation is Pastor Charlie Moore with Sunny Chris United Methodist. Charlie, thanks for being back here. Appreciate it. Let's rise for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
All right, let us pray. Almighty Father, tonight we stand before you as humble servants, humble servants of Christ. And tonight, we stand here and thank you for your blessings and all that you bring that's positive to our life. And at a time where we know it's going to get contentious, we pray for patience and we pray for wisdom. And most of all, we pray for lots of grace for everybody as we work through the situations to help lead a better life and remind us as followers of Christ that we are supposed to do good, do no harm, and stay in love with God. We pray all of this in your mighty name. Amen. God bless you all and the Osle Bendege.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you Pastor Charlie for that invocation. Item four is our next item. That's our consent agenda. Look for any changes or a motion on that.
Move approval?
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson to approve this. Any discussion on that, council? All right, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item nine is next. That's our regular agenda. Look for a motion to approve that, please.
Move to approve?
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve that item. Counselor Knightzert?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend items thirteen, fourteen, and sixteen to show private applicants as Harrisburg School District, Sioux Falls Development Foundation, and Kevin Smith on behalf of Grand Prairie LLC, respectively.
Second Erickson.
All right, so we have an amendment by Counselor Knightzert, seconded by Counselor Erickson. Any discussion on that amendment? All right, let's vote on that, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. So we're back to the main motion as amended. Any other changes here? All right, let's vote on that then, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Before we continue with our regular agenda, I'd like to just review public input for agenda items. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. Per council policy, the chair reserves the right to limit the number of speakers during any agenda item following one hour of testimony, but may be overridden by a majority vote of the council. During the general public input portion of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person, and comments are limited to topics that do not involve agenda items appearing earlier in the agenda, as comments will have already been received for those items. So we'll move to our next item.
Item ten, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, correcting the legal description of ordinance number eight dash twenty-one sponsors the mayor.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. So it's back for second reading. It's a correction to the ordinance, street naming ordinance eight dash twenty-one that was approved January twelfth of two thousand and twenty-one. Legal description was discovered by the Minnehaw County Register of Deeds. So correction ordinance is necessary to ensure that the ordinance is indexed properly. Engineering requests your approval.
All right, perfect, thank you. Anyone from the public would like to speak to this item? Counsel, you got any questions this evening on this one?
Move approval?
Second, Sale.
Second, all right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to approve item ten. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Next item, please.
Item eleven, second reading and emergency ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota to require face covering in an indoor public place where six-foot social distancing cannot be achieved. Sponsors, councilmembers Kylie and Sale.
Counsel Kylie, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. It is the same ordinance as been previously established. The one big difference is once the South Dakota Department of Health announces movement from phase one D of the vaccination schedule to phase one E, it will sunset, it will end. It has, so it does have a exit plan associated with it. It's a result, this ordinance is a result of collaborative effort between the local health systems, the mayor's office, the city of Sioux Falls Department of Health. So I do believe that the main objective in this particular case is to ensure that the individuals that are most vulnerable in our community have an opportunity to get their vaccination prior to this sunsetting. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you, counselor. All right, so I'm guessing a lot of people are here to speak on this. So here's how we'll do this tonight. Anyone can come forward. It's going to be first come, first served. But per the policy, I am going to probably stop public input after an hour because we're about seven months into this mask game, and there's probably not a lot anyone's going to say that's going to be something we haven't heard before. So you can certainly come forward. We'll take your comments as you come. You can come on up, ma'am. And a reminder, you get five minutes, but you don't need to use all five if you don't wish to. So go ahead, young lady. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Lily Quicken. I am nine years old and in third grade. I am here to talk about how I get bullied on the bus and at school because I don't wear a mask. First, they called me an A-hole and said my parents don't care about me. Then they called me names like dumb and stupid. Also, my school librarian doesn't let me sit around the room while others that have, that do have a mask get to go around the room. Also, I have lost some friends over this pandemic, and I don't like this at all. And my mom, brother, and I got kicked out of my favorite store, Claire's, because we didn't wear masks. So for me, it is unfair, just annoying, that they get to do things that I don't. Thank you for letting me talk.
Yeah, thank you, kiddo.
Okay, so good evening. My name is Alexis Quicken. I'm a lifelong resident of Sioux Falls, and Lily here is my daughter. She wrote that speech all by herself, by the way, and I did very little editing for her. I am very proud of her courage and mental strength for being able to withstand the bullying and harassment she has received over the past several months while also not returning that behavior and for speaking tonight. There are many more examples she could share, but these were the ones that stood out to her most. And as far as going to Claire's, only the one employee was in the store, so we totally could have stayed six feet away. So how does it feel to know that elementary-age children are being bullied for not wearing a mask per their parents' instructions? This ordinance helps fuel that. What are parents doing that their kids are talking like this? My kid would never say those horrible things to a pro-masker, and if she did, there would be negative consequences. With this mandate, you are making people feel entitled to think they are better than other people and look down on us and harass us just for making a different decision by simply looking out for our family's mental and physical health. You say you don't want division. This is helping cause division and hostility. I hear stories all the time of people walking into stores without masks, and then other people see them and take theirs off because one person isn't wearing one. I don't think for most that this is about being safe anymore. It's about being complacent in order to avoid conflict and ridicule. It's like the snitches in the Dr. Seuss book. They wear their masks like the gold stars so they can feel like they're better than everyone else. Someone else I know went to the Walmart on Eighty-Fifth and Louise with their kids, and over the intercon system, someone announced a description of them saying that they weren't wearing a mask so that they could hunt them down and have security remove them from the building. This is insanity. Just one example of something that someone said about me on Facebook, they said, and I'm reading this verbatim, so pardon what I'm saying here, but "I have had my go-around with this Alexis Quicken, and this bitch needs to be slapped hard enough to snap her self-righteous, not caring ass back into reality. I guarantee you this much, not one word you said had made it into that thick-headed bitch's narrow-minded, uncaring soul, because I believe she has no soul, just a shell of a person." Obviously, this person has made zero effort to get to know me. This is all about fear. I choose faith over fear. There's a big difference between walking into the middle of a highway and expecting not to get killed and going out without a mask for a virus with a ninety-nine percent survival rate. Anyone who wants to wear a mask can. Why do their rights outweigh mine? They can wear a mask, they can stay home, et cetera. Most people don't really care. They just want to be treated like, they just don't want to be treated like my family is for not wearing one. When this ordinance first began, I tried my best to stay at least six feet away from others at the grocery store. It was impossible if it was busy, and you know what? They didn't even see that I was trying to be courteous, because I actually do care about other people and try to respect their choices, even if I disagree. Person after person would pass and not see that I was patiently waiting for them to move. When people have a mask on, they think they're invincible, and most of them don't even try to stay away from me. Do you see how all these people behind me, we stand united? This is just a small sample of the group of people I've connected with over this mask ordinance. Let us be clear, we are done. We are so done. And so is North Dakota, Texas, Mississippi, Iowa, Montana, as they are lifting their mandates. And then Alaska, Arizona, Florida, Georgia, Idaho, Missouri, Nebraska, Oklahoma, South Carolina, Tennessee, and us here in South Dakota never had one at the state level. So again, I don't understand why we are doing it here at the city level. And we're here to talk about extending it? Why? We've extended it how many times now? I can't keep track. The last time I believe the qualifier to lift the ordinance was to lower the hospitalization rate. We did that. Oh, but we need to make another excuse to extend it. So what will the excuse be next time? Will this ever end, or will we just keep going around? They say you have to wear a mask after you receive the vaccination. So will that be the next excuse to extend the mandate yet another time? Make a guideline and stick to it if nothing else. The hospitalization rate has decreased, so it's time to stop. All this mandate has done is embolden people to hate and to completely disregard others if they have a different opinion. They hide behind a mandate to belittle and harass people. People think that they are more righteous and that they care about others so that they think they can attack people like us. Please, vote no on the mask ordinance extension. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, come on up, ma'am. And we probably don't need to applaud. I'm guessing you'll want to applaud for everyone, but that will keep things moving. So you can go ahead. Thank you.
Sure, yeah. I guess I've never spoken, so I don't know if I'm supposed to introduce myself?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, okay. Well, my name is Hannah, and it's kind of amazing that-
What's your last name, Hannah?
Van Steenweig.
All right, thanks.
Yeah. So it is kind of amazing that she spoke. I'm definitely a crier, so I apologize for that. I even just met with my niece, who is about her same age, second grade, and and we definitely, um, her daughter's story is not the only one. I have plenty of students and my own niece, who comes home crying and begging not to go back. We have had ordeals with their own teacher, calling them out and saying, "Everyone else, we're going to do this except for you who's on the mask exemption list." Not only the teachers, grown adults bullying second graders, but their peers, just as with Alexis's dollar. And it's one thing to see hope drain from an adult's eyes, and it's another thing to see it drain from children's eyes. I'm doing a mural, and my whole reason to do it is because I've seen and known too many clients who have told me, even if everything went back to normal, quote-unquote "normal", they would still not be hopeful enough to search out joy. Our own decisions affect people. We have the right and authority to make our own decisions, and there are many who honestly just don't want to be insulted. They don't want to have a scene caused. They don't want to hurt someone else's feelings, all the while hiding our own beliefs just to be able to get in somewhere, basic and necessity. Many people don't want to have their own basic needs denied, just like at one of the I know many, along with myself and my husband, who we went to go check on, have an ultrasound for pregnancy complications, and had no problem at the entrance, had no problem with masks going in, had no problem sitting in the waiting room with four other families two feet from us until someone came to take us to the room. Meanwhile, I and my husband cannot wear one. And we were threatened to be kicked out and denied service, and I had no idea what else to do because I needed to have this ultrasound done. There's that story, my niece's story, her daughter's story, the story of all my clients who have just completely lost hope because they don't see people making decisions. People being denied for medical services is not singled out. It is not something that's just far off in another country. It is not something that is just far off in another side of the United States. It is here in Sioux Falls. People make their own decisions, and we have to have the trust to people make their own decisions. I want to say, community is not staying in your home and letting your suicidal neighbor kill themselves. Community is going over and saying, "You know what? I care and love about you. Can we have lunch together?" And it doesn't matter if you are right or left, because everybody needs to breathe and everybody needs to be loved, and everybody needs to have hope and joy. This mural that I'm doing, I don't care if they're right or left. They come in and they get such a spark on their face. And that's what everyone is capable of doing, not just me, because I'm an artist. Everyone is capable of bringing hope and joy to people. I really do want to thank you.
Thanks, Hannah. Ma'am, can you, can the next person up lift that mic up that was bent down? You can come on up, ma'am. Just go and put that mic back up, and there you go. Thank you.
Okay, my name is Kelly Richter, and I don't have much to say, except that the division in Sioux Falls was not there until they announced that they were going to look at a mask mandate way back the first time before, when they wanted to have a penalty attached to it. At that moment, when it was announced that that bill was going to be brought forward, or that mandate was going to be brought forward, there was a line drawn in Sioux Falls. And I'm sorry, Hannah, this story is really effective. I remember a couple of years ago, the town came together when there were sub-zero temperatures, and there was a boxer named Lola that was lost in Sioux Falls. It was from Omaha. And so the gal who owned Lola was not even one of ours, but at that, during that time, I think we kind of made her one of ours. And the entire city came together. People, businesses were donating food, and people were gathering together and doing, you know, basically a search and rescue for this dog. And the town came together like I have never seen, and I've lived in this town my entire life. And I want Sioux Falls to go back. Excuse me. I want Sioux Falls to go back to that unification, that unified city, and not this divided battleground that we've had ever since this mask mandate was announced. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. My name is Abby Erickson, and I'm in the medical field. I test blood for a living, and I study it under a microscope. I've spent this entire, over this whole last year studying COVID, speaking with physicians, listening to doctors discuss their cases in front of Congress, only to be dismissed. I could sit up here and I could spend the next eight hours convincing you that this is all bogus information. There is no need for a mask. If your mouth and your nose is covered and your eyes are not covered with goggles, you can still get a virus through your eyes that goes through your nose and into your throat. It's just common sense, people. That's what it is. But what I'm going to tell you today is, is a lot worse. I'm very vocal in social media, on politics, and I have been harassed. The other day, I had a meeting that I was speaking at. I had protesters show up. That's ridiculous. They don't like anything that I have to say. And I'll give you an example. I had a Facebook message, someone work, an employee of the Vinyl Taco in here in Sioux Falls, the cook there, sent me a private message and said, "I hope you come into the Vinyl Taco, because I will, my wife and I both had COVID, and I would cough into your food, and so you would die." I have that in a message. It's disgusting. Here's another, here's another scenario. I went into Target. I got into Target. I was almost done shopping. Some lady stopped me, and she started yelling at me. She called me a murderer. She said, "As long as I wasn't wearing a mask, I was a murderer." And she went up and got management, and thank goodness, they had enough common sense to just leave me alone. I checked out and left, and this was after probably a five-minute scene that she threw, calling me all kinds of names. I went into Duluth Trading Company. I had three thousand dollars cash in my pocket to buy a bunch of employees shirts, flannel shirts, so we could embroider on them. The young lady in there no less than harassed me. She pushed me out the door. She said I wasn't welcome there, and little did she know, she lost out on a three thousand dollars sale and a lifetime customer because I've been going to Duluth Trading Company for a long time. These are common, common, common stories. My daughter's got rash on her face from going to school. We thought, okay, let's get rid of the, let's get rid of the disposable masks. No, that caused them, that caused the rash as well. This is absolutely absurd. Kids are being singled out in schools. We are being attacked everywhere we go. I know, I, I'll tell you this, not one time, for about three weeks, when all of this started, I was terrified. I thought, oh, my gosh, we're all going to die. That's, that was my, I, I did everything to protect myself. I went to the store with gloves on. I was scared. But I decided to do my due diligence, and I did my research, and I realized that this is just, it's, it's a global agenda here. And if you don't see it, or if you want to call it a conspiracy, that's a problem that you have. You need to look at the science. There should not be a mask mandate here in Sioux Falls, ever. People are being affected. They're losing their family members. Kids are losing their friends. I haven't been able to go see my own grandmother in the nursing home for one year, right after she lost my grandpa, is when all of this started. How do you think she's doing right now? Not well. But I have to try to FaceTime her, and for a ninety-one-year-old woman, you don't FaceTime very well, okay? So we need to, we need to step up and do what's right for our community. You are not, if you're not already hearing the stories, I hope you let them absorb, and I really hope you're paying attention tonight, because these are important, important stories. Masks serve no purpose, absolutely no purpose, and there's not a single one of you that would, could defy that. You know that. You know that. So I'm asking you, please, if you're the, if you're the breaking, the tiebreaker tonight, Mayor, I am asking you to do the right thing. Our governor has given us the ability to do what we need to do, and now we need you to step up to the plate and do what's right.
Thanks, Abby. Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Tocaidis, and there should be a PowerPoint coming up here briefly soon.
Go ahead, start talking. We'll get it going.
Sure. Well, if we're going to talk about a mask mandate, we need some background information as to what Corona, as to what COVID is. And the definition is, hey, all right, thank you, sir. It's Coronavirus Disease Twenty-Nineteen. And there's a picture of a coronavirus. It's a drawing, but it means, it's kind of a beautiful picture. All right, so to prevent a pandemic, there's the steps that you might need to go through. I have them listed. Can't read them, no time. But that wasn't what happened in this country, and we really should try to figure out why. And who benefits from the COVID response that we've been doing here? Not me. Things that we happened, you know, government ignored it, let it spread. Rhetoric is amazing. It's getting worse and worse as the years go by. No mask, one mask, now two masks. And then you didn't mask until twenty twenty-two, I read recently. And look at what happened to our rights along the way. Oh, my gosh. Aren't rights important anymore? Some of the things that the government has done include lockdowns, curfews, shutdowns. And look who made money and who lost money. Not what we want to hear, but that's what I see going on with regard to this particular pandemic. Your cell phone might be useful for context tracing, but it's really bad for democracy and freedom, especially because the Department of Homeland Security has a database of reporters. Think what they could do with that information when it comes time to shut down dissent. Now, we really like to talk about how dangerous this disease really is. I found a reference there that says the infection fatality rate is zero point one-six percent, and the flu infection fatality rate is zero point one percent. Not a whole lot of difference. Somebody else said that this has a ninety-nine percent survivability. That's, they underestimated it. It's more like ninety-nine point nine percent. And then we've got problems with COVID deaths being exaggerated, because people report people who died from COVID, who died when they had COVID, as a COVID death. Didn't necessarily die from COVID, though. This is an interesting plot. Looks at the death rate in the United States over the last sixty years, and you notice there's no noticeable spike in twenty nineteen. The trend hasn't changed. So where's all the deaths from COVID? It's not on that plot. News is pretty good at sensationalizing things. There's some data from twenty sixteen that says that people mostly die from heart disease and cancer, but news media reports a lot of violence. We still see that kind of stuff with all the sensationalized reports about COVID deaths. But let's look at how good masks really are. I found this reference here that says, "Oh, yeah, we need masks. Faster implementation consistently shown to be protective." Great reference. That would really support what the council is trying to do here. But then there's this other reference that says, "Well, maybe not so much." The important part of this reference, that line in the middle, "The difference was not statistically significant." So maybe they helped, maybe they don't. This reference here, it says, "Sorry, folks, they're no good." There's a citation. There's the citation. I, I think this reference is the most important of the batch, because it takes a longer-term view, looks at more data. But it says, "Masks are no good." Some of the disadvantages of a mask, false sense of security, bad view of science, because the CDC can't make up their freaking mind, not good for your emotional health either. And where's the emergency, everybody? This has been going on longer than a year. How can you say it's an emergency? Just not accurate anymore. Here's a plot of the seasonal flu. Happens to be COVID. It winds down to zero. Now, my recommendations here are that you repeal any COVID emergency. You need to base policy on careful science and not on a need to do something. I know it's nice to do something, but if it doesn't help, it's no point. Got to be really careful and not get sucked in by mass hysteria, because there's a lot of that going on. And then, like other people have said, we should try to live and enjoy life, spread some beauty and joy while you can. And here's a little bit of beauty and joy that I found in Utah.
All right, thanks, David.
Good evening.
Thank you. Come on up, man. Welcome back. Pull the mics down a little bit there.
Juan Vargas, a business owner here in Sioux Falls. And I'm back again, just trying to understand mostly and, and voicing, voicing my concern for, for a lot more people, representing people like myself that don't always come, that cannot come, that will not come, but that do feel the same. See, I am, I'm American-born, but I did, I did live as a child in Mexico, okay? And then, when I came back to the, well, in Mexico, while in Mexico, as I grew older, I realized that much of life down there is about survival, okay? And I noticed that a lot of people down there will be tempted to do just about anything for survival, okay? For, for money, or for whatever it might be. And then, here in the U.S., I like, I love South Dakota, I love Sioux Falls. This is where I was introduced to Jesus. I got saved. Somebody from Sioux City told me and led me to the Lord. And then I realized there was a group of people here in my church here in Sioux Falls that took me in and kind of taught me, taught me different things, you know? They taught me, mostly they taught me to do right, because it's right. You know, they taught me that right comes from God, and they taught me that we have someone, someone over us that we are accountable to. So I guess what I'm trying to say here today is that we need to do the right thing because it's right. You know, this is the U.S. that I grew to love, that I grew to appreciate, that I model myself after. I want to be, I want to be like the soldiers that don't act like the soldiers from another country. I want to be like the, like the police officers that don't do the things that they do in other countries, okay? I want to be like, like leaders that don't do what other people do, you know? They do right because it's right, and, and that's why I've come to love my country. And I'm really pleading with you guys to do the right thing because it's right, to be concerned about all of your citizens, not just the loudest ones, not the most emotional ones, not the ones that want to stir the pot all the time. Because we are mostly, the conservative are mostly quiet, you know? And they, and they're not going to make the big displays, even though lately, I think people have been forced to, and we're just worried that we are losing this U.S. that we have loved for so long. And this is the model, not only for me, but for people like me, but for the world. And we need to, we need, it starts in these little things, these little town meetings, these small cities like Sioux Falls, with, with decisions like these, and with each council member doing the right thing because of that. Not because of pressure, not because of convenience, and not, especially not because of, of some people being, being loud and threatening and, and having that, that attitude towards you. But, but we need to keep that integrity that we are known for already, and we need to continue that. So I really want to plead with you to be, to be good Americans, to be good people, to, to recognize God, to recognize what right is, and to, to take everyone into consideration in your decision. I ask that you would vote against this mandate being extended again, even though you, you've got all the science, you've got all the charts. They're so inconclusive. Most of them say they don't even help. The, the death rate is so low, the beds in the hospital are so many, you know? We got, they told us we were all going to die, like you've heard so many times before, and we didn't even get close. So we need to consider that. We need to not put the little guy out of business. We need to not put the one that, that wants to do the right thing, or that believes differently out of business. I really want you to consider that as you make this vote tonight. Please do the right thing because it's right.
All right, thanks, Juan. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Carl Elifson. Is this on?
We'll flip it on. There you go, Carl.
You got handles for everybody else if they would like them. This information is from the CDC, published March 5th. You can see mask efficacy and how it actually works. So if you guys want to believe science, here is your science from the people who probably do science the best. Highlighted points. During March 1st through December 31st, 2020, state-issued mask mandates applied in 2,300 or 73.6% of U.S. counties. Mask mandates were associated with a half a percent point decrease in daily COVID case growth rates. One to 20 days after, implementation decreased 1.1, 1.5, 1.7, and 1.8% between 21 to 40, 41 to 60, 61 to 80, and 81 to 100 days, respectively, after implementation. Mask mandates are associated with a .7% point decrease in daily COVID-19 death growth rates. Again, one to 20 days. You've got 1%, 1.4, 1.6, 1.9% in 21 to 40, 41 to 60, 61 to 80, and 81 to 100 days. If you go down to the pink, that's going to say your daily death growth rates before restrictions were lifted were not statistically different from those during the reference period, whereas significant differences in daily case growth rates were observed 41 to 60 days before restrictions were lifted. Like I said, this is straight from the horse's mouth of the science that you guys claim to follow. Here's your charts showing insignificant numbers. If you want to see you follow science, well, here's federal science. I just ask that you do follow it, like you said you were going to in the beginning, because, as you can see, we the people, we elected you to do a job not to enforce unethical and unconstitutional rights. You don't need to remove things from people that are probably healthier than most of the people wearing masks in the first place. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you. Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Thank you for having me, City Council. My name is Sarah Coob. Okay? And I think you all owe Dr. Stella Emanuel an apology, okay? She's the one who came up with hydrochloroquine as the solution early in the pandemic, and y'all told her to get bent. The whole United States did. And we've lost, what the news is saying, 500,000 people. Now, are we going to hold our representatives accountable for those deaths? If you've ever been in the Sioux Falls School District, and you have been in their science labs, they have the equipment to make this drug. They have the equipment to make not only hydrochloroquine, but levermectin, resmavir, and many other antivirals. And it was not distributed. And I'm questioning why. During the Cold War, my government distributed iodide to every family in the country on the threat of nuclear war. Why have you failed to distribute this drug during a bioweapon attack? And why has nobody been held accountable for the attack? It seems like we don't have an accurate number of deaths, and if you go and ask your life insurance policy what it thinks of your vaccine, they say it is experimental, and it is not FDA-approved, and that it can void your life insurance. If that is true, wow. Okay? The WHO, World Health Organization, said on Bloomberg News on 8/3/2020, okay? Last summer, they said that the CV death rate is .06%. Pandemic level is .07%. Why are we doing this? It needs to be asked. And I have been trying to get medical care myself. I need to see a gastroenterologist, and I can't get in to see one. Why? Because I can't wear a mask, because I vomit, and I have a 91% oxygen level. And they tell me they can't treat me. And if they're telling me this, they're telling other people this, and people are dying. Do we hold you accountable for the deaths? If not, who do we hold accountable? Because the antiviral should have been distributed. It's 80 years of standard protocol in the medical industry, and I want to know why all of a sudden we got collective amnesia. So, other than that, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sarah.
Please think long and hard before you continue this communism, or socialism, or whatever you want to call it.
Got it. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Sandra Harmon. I actually live in Hartford, but I did live in Sioux Falls. I moved here from Ohio. I was born in Kentucky, and when I came here, I actually worked for the radio station, which was backyard broadcasting at that time.
You know what? I'm going to give you your time back. When other people are speaking, can you show respect and not have outbursts, please, whoever that is over there? Go ahead, Sandra, I'm sorry.
And I decided to come at this at a different angle today. I'm not going to stand and tell you everything that's happened to me, because I had a ministry in nursing home assistant living in retirement homes. I did 25 to 30 of those every month, and I would go in and spend two hours with them. I would greet them as they came in and as they left. Sometimes I spent prayer, in time and prayer with them, because, you know, when you go into a nursing home, as of the time, you're on your last leg of life, right? And, you know, we're all not too far from that. And when I seen what was going on in the nursing homes, and how some of these people were afraid of death, it broke my heart. So I actually dug into music that they liked, and not only did that, but I would pray with them if they asked me to, because they hadn't seen family and didn't even know some of their families were deceased. And it broke my heart to see that. Well, when March came around, that all ended. They stopped me cold in my tracks. I could no longer go in and sing for them. I could no longer pray with them. I could no longer visit them, and it's still the fact today. Now, I've had three of the, of nursing homes in this town in Sioux Falls, South Dakota, that has told me that if I will take the vaccine and I will wear a mask, I can come in to sing for them. Well, I cannot. And it is no secret to the United States of America that our governor, Kristi Noem, has been one of the most vocal voices against the mask mandates. She says, "If folks want to wear a mask, they are free to do so. Those who don't want to wear a mask shouldn't be ashamed into, be shamed into it, and government should not mandate it." She goes on to say that we need to respect each other's decisions. She says, "In South Dakota, we know a little common courtesy goes a long way." I ask you to think about that tonight as you make your decision. She has said many times that she trusts the South Dakotans to make their own decisions. That brings me to two issues that I have, and maybe a couple more. I'm confused as to why Sioux Falls would go against what our own governor has said many times on national TV. It leads me to, to believe that the South Dakotans have put this mask mandate into place against her, because I am really an outsider coming into your state. I've been here for 10 years, and I thought that this, this Sioux Falls and South Dakota were all unified. And it also makes what she's saying simply not true. She has led the American people to believe that we do not have a mask mandate, and I see everybody in front of me tonight with a mask on. You have touched your mask too many times to count, and every time you do that, you contaminate everything that you touch. Okay, this is not true. This is simply not true that we are mask-free in South Dakota because of the mayors of all the cities and the councilmen. No disrespect, but I cannot understand why you all are not on the same side. Being on opposite sides is a huge contradiction to not only the state of South Dakota, the South Dakota leaders, but also the American people, because they believe that we are mask-free. To me, this is about trust. We trusted both Kristi Noem and all of you, every one of you, or you would not even hold the office that you hold right now. So now I ask you to ask yourself as an individual, why? Why can't you trust us? Why don't you trust us to take care of our physical and mental well-being? What has happened in this last year? The way I see it, you were voted into office, you took an oath. You were voted into office because we trust you, and now we are asking you to do the same. Show us the same respect. Let us decide, decide whether we need to or want to wear a mask. This mask mandate says that South Dakotans are not capable to, capable to make smart decisions and don't trust, you don't trust us. It cannot be the numbers, because just last week, Kellis News stated that less than half of 1,888 people that have died of this coronavirus lives in nursing homes and has underlying conditions. The media also claimed that 100,000 people came down with the coronavirus after the 2020 Sturgis rally, because they did not wear masks. But Kristi comes out and says that only 100 of them were traced back, and you know that. This has been in the news. She also stated just a couple of weeks ago that in CPAP in Florida...
Thanks for your comments, Sandra. We're going to move on to the next speaker. That's five minutes. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Megan Cheddar. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. South Dakota Codified Laws 22-40-1. Practicing medicine without a license. Requiring mask-wearing as a medical intervention. Unless you are a licensed medical professional, you have no authority to recommend such a practice. Further, a surgical mask is designated by the FDA as a medical device. You have no legal authority, responsibility, or liability to require that of either your customer or your employees. This class-one misdemeanor carries the penalty of up to one year in prison, $2,000 in fines, or both. I'm going to echo a similar story to others who have testified here. As a business owner in Sioux Falls, I have many opportunities to see and hear what the public is saying. The majority who come into my business come wearing their mask as not to offend others. After learning that it is safe, most choose to remove the mask. Just last week, I had a mom and daughter visit my salon to prepare for an event. They came in wearing their mask, but as soon as they learned it was not required, off came the mask. Event, you might ask? Yes, an event. This high school freshman was beyond excited to attend her first high school winter formal in Sioux Falls. This was not school-sponsored event, because the powers that be thought it would be safer for the kids not to have a dance than to have one. Well, that seemed to go over like a lead balloon, because some adults, along with students, organized a dance off-campus. From what I understand, they had a well-attended winter formal for the kids. One thing I regularly hear from parents is that kids need their lives back. It appears that regardless of rules that are made, they will find the liberty to do just that. Truth be told, I have gained many new clients this last year. They heard that I will not require them to wear a mask, so they have left their longtime stylists in exchange for freedom. In the past, we have heard testimony from those who have difficulty wearing a mask. Last week, Councilor Erickson and others shared some of their struggles. Recently, the council had the first reading on the ordinance that would require the residents to bring their trash cans to the road. My understanding is that this ordinance was put in place to help the garbage services that were short-staffed due to COVID. During the last discussion, one of you, Councilor Starr, I believe, talked about why we should discontinue this ordinance. The reason? It is difficult for some people to get the trash to the end of the driveway. I'm glad you have compassion and are thinking of others, Mr. Starr, but this leaves me with two questions. First, do you care about all people equally? If so, why don't you have compassion for the people who are telling you that it is difficult for them to wear a mask? The second question is, if we are far enough through the pandemic to stop taking the trash to the... to the street, why aren't we far enough to stop mass, a mask ordinance? It was, after all, just to slow the spread, right? Last week, Councilor Kylie mentioned that we would like to extend the ordinance into April until we have reached a certain point in administering the vaccine. I'm sure the counselor did not mean to mislead you, but I'm a bit concerned that it is just an excuse to keep us on the road to endlessly moving the marker. This past week, a nurse client informed me that although all the residents at our nursing home have had their vaccine, they are still being required to social distance and wear masks. This is nothing new. Our nation's top scientists, if that's what you want to call them, have told us we will still have to wear a mask. This leads me to wonder, does the vaccine not work or are we being controlled? Councilor Kylie said that this would be extended in order to protect our most vulnerable citizens. Let me ask this, are you sure we are protecting them or are we hurting them? In February, I made a house call to Ava's house, a man by the name of Albert, who served our great nation in the Navy during the Korean conflict, was living out his last days at Ava's house, a hospice facility. Albert spent a couple of the last few months of his life in a nursing home before going to hospice. What he told me was that he would rather have died of COVID than to be alone without his family in the nursing home. He came to Ava's house just so he could have his family near him during his last days. Are we really protecting them by keeping them en masse and lonely in their rooms? This week, I heard another story about a local man walking into a store. Along came a masked vigilante to enforce the city council's ordinance. Well, why not? It's unenforceable by the police, right? As Bob was still outside before entering the store, before he got his mask on, a man in a car violently loud, yelled out his window, "Put on your mask, asshole! This division needs to stop." This past week, several states eliminated their mask mandates and opened their states. If you remove this ordinance, I have no doubt that the people and businesses who are just doing it for posterity's sake will continue to do it. That, however, should be the decision of the people, not that of elected officials. You, the city council, have been put here by we, the people. We are backing you. Let's move forward to a healthy city, free from fear and unconstitutional ordinances. Please end this. Mayor, I have one thing to say. I know you mentioned that, that most who speak, you've already heard what they have to say, but there are some people who have a story to tell and I ask you to let them tell it.
Thank you, Megan. Come on up, ma'am.
My name is Chris David. On Thursday, I was denied medical services and discriminated against by one of the Sioux Falls hospitals. Excuse me. I sent you all emails. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Rick, for your responses. If you care, please listen to what I have to say and what others have to say as well. And Mayor, I've backed you a long time, but this is no mask joke. That was a slap-on-the-face comment. I thought my story was unique. Do you know it's not? Those around me here tonight and watching online were strangers before your yes vote brought us and our stories together. One strangers, some of us have now cried together, encouraged each other, and decided to speak out together. We are no longer sheep with our heads quietly down, going about our business as best we can. It's what your yes vote forced, on this forced masking, has created. The details of why I was going to the hospital and when I needed is not the point of the story. I went at the directive of my doctor. At their interest, I was told I needed a mask and to have my temperature taken. I turned to the machine for my temperature and was told I needed the mask on first. I was baffled at why the technology needed a mask on my face to read my temp. I said, "I can't wear a mask." I was told, "Sorry, that's our policy." Even after discussions, there was no other options given to me. Because of the way I looked, the person made an assumption about me and my medical needs. This is discrimination. I had to leave and not get service. This is one of the hospitals you all praise and gather data from in making your decisions, yet in turn, they turn people away. This discrimination is what your yes vote has created. I called and spoke to two different hospital officials. The one in charge of the place told me, "Just put on any fabric from home to get in. Any fabric. Any fabric." He said it didn't matter whether I had a shot or COVID already, I still needed a mask. This is a higher-up person. This isn't some doohickey person at the door. Also, they were both baffled to hear that this council said the mask date is only being extended until mid-April and both interrupted me on separate phone calls to correct what they know and have been told inside the hospital. They both said that the discussion at the hospital is that the date is so up in the air that they quote, "Are talking fall into winter for no more masking." The one hospital rep said, "Who knows? It'll be just another strain. We've all had the shot multiple times for months. The shot is not hundred percent and herd immunity needs to be reached." It's coming from the hospital. Regarding another doctor appointment I tried to make, the doctor, the person at the desk said that that doctor needs to see my doctor's papers, which you once scoffed at, to get in and if they agreed that the reason was good enough, they would let me in. Otherwise, quote, "Just wait until the whole COVID thing is over to come in." Wow. A doctor telling patients not to see, seek preventative medicine. My late father would disagree and urged the opposite before his painful death. This blatant disregard and discrimination, even at a doctor's level, is the root result of your yes votes. Oh, and this higher-up hospital person? And I said, "How's your bed capacity?" He goes, "Fine." Like, why am I asking that kind of question? A person's word, council members and mayor, was once all you needed. Most of us have believed your words in the beginning. You've lost that. Your word and good name means nothing anymore, especially with another yes vote tonight. You say, "Just wear the darn mask." Or, Mr. Kylie, "I'm voting yes to protect the vulnerable." Or, "I'm voting yes to show I love my neighbor." I say, "What psychologically abusive, uncaring, and obtuse statements? If those statements are true, the opposite is that you're assuming people can just wear the darn mask. We aren't vulnerable and we hate our neighbor." Your yes vote has proven that to be true. Your yes vote gives people, places, and businesses, and other facilities permission to discriminate based on looks. Your yes vote gives permission and a nod that we obviously hate others and are subject to the abuse we receive. The public letter from the president of the outdoor activity hill is a prime example of this discrimination. He said, "Leave your unmasked smiling face at home if you want to make a political statement." That's your yes vote. Shop local, shop small is not possible for us, Mr. Mayor. We've been separated and it's not equal. Have you tried taking forty-five seconds to return a cable modem without a mask? It ain't gonna happen. It's discrimination at the door. The Sioux Falls City Hospital, Schools, and Businesses are bucking for some major lawsuits. You can no longer say you don't know about this discrimination exists or that you don't agree with us or the behavior you perpetrated. You created it. I have a lot more to say, but I'm going to say this. Even if you voted yes in the past, be bold, stand strong. A vote no tonight will lift the dark cloud-
Thank you.
-you know, start healing the decision or the division that this has created.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Good evening, sir.
Thank you for your time tonight. I'm here to speak in support of the mask mandate. But wouldn't that at least be refreshing?
Can you remind me your name, sir?
My name is Merlin Huff.
Yeah, thanks.
So, what I'm going to cover tonight, ladies and gentlemen, is do NPIs, non-pharmaceutical interventions, work? And this is not an emergency. And all the charts that I'm going to show you tonight are built from publicly available data. So, the first question, do non-pharmaceutical interventions work? COVID nineteen is a seasonal res- regional respiratory virus. COVID nineteen is going to do what COVID nineteen is going to do regardless of any non-pharmaceutical interventions that we make. A CDC meta-study back in May of twenty twenty on NPIs in non-medical settings found no significant reduction in influenza transmission with the use of face masks. Now, I won't have time to review in detail all the studies that I have to show you tonight. I have many, many more case studies beyond what I show. So here's a graph showing all US states with and without mask mandates. The line in black are states that sometimes required masks. The line in orange are states that had mandatory mask requirements and the line in blue are states that did not require mask restrictions. So if masks make a difference, how do we explain the case rates across the United States with and without masking? Here's Arizona, California, and Nevada. California, as you know, had very stringent mask requirements. Nevada and Arizona, not so much. California is in blue, Nevada is in orange, and Arizona is there in black. So if NPIs or non-pharmaceutical interventions make a difference, why do states with and without them show the exact same pattern? Here's Florida counties with mask mandates and without mask mandates. If I didn't label them, would you be able to tell which was which? Here's Montana and Idaho. Montana had a mask mandate. Montana has a population of about one million people. Idaho had no mask mandate and a population of one point six million people. Why is it that Montana was doing worse? Here's Iowa. Note that Iowa had already peaked by the time that their mask mandate came out and after the mandate was removed, there was no distinct increase in cases. Now here's North Dakota and South Dakota. One of them had mask mandate, statewide mask mandate, and one of them did not. Can you tell me which is which? Here we have Sioux Falls. Here's a three-day average of new cases, basically since the start all the way through to today. The vertical line in orange is the mask mandate on November twenty-seventh. Note that there's a spike of cases immediately following the mask mandate. Also note that the trend of cases was already on a decline before the mask mandate went into effect. Here we have hospitalizations in Sioux Falls. Again, notice that the trend of cases was already on a decline before the mask mandate went into effect. Here we have state restrictions plotted against the deaths-per-million population. All US states with their state restrictions graphed on the Y-axis and the deaths-per-million graphed on the X-axis. There doesn't appear to be any correlation. This is no longer an emergency. Here's a graph showing hospital usage across South Dakota. This is from the South Dakota Department of Health. Here's a graph showing the percentage of the South Dakota population that has had coronavirus. And now let's do a little bit of quick math. Herd immunity. SARS saw spontaneous immunity rates of approximately fifty percent. SARS is another coronavirus. This could be true for COVID nineteen as well. Herd immunity is thought to take effect at sixty to seventy percent community exposure. So, in other words, if we need sixty to seventy percent requirement for herd immunity and fifty percent of us have a spontaneous immunity, that would mean we would only need about ten to twenty percent of community exposure required. Now, I know this is a little speculative, but this doesn't even account for vaccinations. So here's that graph that I showed you earlier and note that the spread starts to slow as we begin to near that ten percent infected mark, which is exactly what herd immunity would predict. This is no longer an emergency, if it ever was. The mask mandate was passed as an emergency measure. Death rates are one point six eight percent in South Dakota and that's among the infected. That's not all of our population. We never ran out of hospital capacity and we are not currently at risk of running out. Herd immunity means the end of the emergency. It's time to stop calling this an emergency. In conclusion, non-pharmaceutical interventions do not work. The emergency is over. Please, 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 let the mandate expire. Do not extend the mask mandate. Vote no. Let us get back to normal. Thank you.
Thanks, Merlin. Come on up, ma'am. Good evening. There you go.
Hi, I'm Leah Anderson. Mine's going to be really brief. I believe at the December meeting, it was Christine that maybe asked Kylie what we needed to come to, and I'm paraphrasing, what point did we need to come to to get rid of this mandate? And it was said, a significant decrease in hospitalizations was what you guys talked about at that time. So, hospitalizations right now, this is, I just was on the computer before I came. So November tenth, we had six hundred and seven hospitalized in the state. On May ninth, yesterday, we had seventy-one hospitalized in the whole state. So that's an eighty-eight percent reduction. That's significant. And then our to- this is based on total population, not those infected, but if you look at the total population of our state, the number I got was nine oh seven eight twenty. That's our population. The active cases yesterday were two thousand ninety-seven. That is point, I repeat, point two-three percent of the people in our state have an active case. That is less than one percent by a lot. That's, that's a huge, significant decrease. In just Minnehaha County, I couldn't get just Sioux Falls numbers because that's not really doable since people come from other towns to our hospitals. But in Minnehaha County, our total population estimate is one ninety-seven four seventy-two and the active cases yesterday were five hundred and twenty. That is point two-six percent, point two-six percent. That is not an emergency. There is no need to have a mask mandate in place. And I just want to remind you that, like many have said, that masks are doing more harm to our community at this point. The issue is causing division among friends and family. We have that going on in our own family and people are showing hostility among one another in public places. Even my husband and myself, who have been very active members of our church, are now divided as to where to go to church. I go to a church that doesn't require masks and he stays at our church at Abiding Savior. So you're creating division where division does not need to happen and I want this to end. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Hannah Huff and I'd like to speak to you about the mask mandate and its costs and what we can do. As an overview, there is a cost. I'm going to have some notes as well. Let me open those up. Had that ready. But there are things that we can do. As to the cost, as you've heard tonight, the mandate makes the social temperature increase and mothers and children are becoming targets of anger. The mandate makes outlaws of citizens who choose not to wear a mask. The mandate makes it hard for kids to learn. The mandate makes it harder for families with autism, deafness, and other different abilities. The mandate makes the idea of this new normal harder and harder to step away from. The mandate makes it more difficult for citizens to make their own decisions for fear of growing social pressures against them and the mandate makes it seem like you all have the answer. The cost across the US lockdowns correlate to high rates of suicide, alcohol and drug abuse, domestic violence and child abuse, missed cancer screenings. We've heard about many missed medical screenings today. Continuing the mandate contributes to the kind of environment that has fear, which makes people afraid to go out. People look to you for your guidance and we need you to encourage sanity. Our children. In all of this debate, we almost never hear about the impact this has on children and families and we're doing untold damage to our kids. The daily, normal, casual interactions that once filled our day are now so insulated from anything resembling human contact that the, the amount of human contact my child gets is to interact with other people is almost zero. My eighteen-month-old cannot make out the sounds and words from people, even caregivers, because the mask covers their face and muffles their voice. He has trouble listening and responding to teachers and ends up giving up and playing alone. And now children are masking as young as two, making it even harder for other children to make friends. Grocery store visits are now marked by angry stares and snippy comments. My son is learning that the world is a cold and isolated place where people don't smile, they don't hug, they don't high-five. He's learning that interactions with strangers are strained and filled with fear, tension, and anger. While you say that your mandate has no fine, we feel the fine every day. The derision from our community members is palpable and suffocating. Businesses are so afraid of bad PR that they go along with these city guidelines, making it even more difficult for people like me to take my son anywhere where he can see my smiling face when we run errands. Our kids deserve normalcy, not a redefinition of it. They need to see faces and smiles. They need to hear and interact with their teachers and people around them. They deserve to go shopping with their parents without the risk of watching their mother be yelled at or chased down by a store attendant or harassed for choosing to breathe and smile freely. I want my son to see my face. I believe that this is far more important than the risks, but your mandate makes us enemies to those around us. Your mandate fosters fear. So please, please, we implore you, remove the mandate. There are things we can do. It feels good to do something and it's wrong that this has hurt so many members of our community, but we can focus on protecting the vulnerable. I encourage you to look at the Great Barrington Declaration, which has a focused protection approach. We can pursue herd immunity. The social pressure to always wear a mask is now counterproductive to those who have beaten COVID, like my husband. They should be encouraged to go without masks. In summary, there is a cost, a great one, and we may not know the, the damage it has done, but there are things we can do. So please, remove the mandate and please encourage people to just be smart. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thanks, Hannah. Okay, thanks, Hannah. Okay, so we're at one hour right now of public input. I'm just going to read back some of the.
Mr. Mayor, I would move. No, we don't need a summary of what we heard. We need a motion. I would move that we would allow people to be heard until they consume as much time as that are in our rules.
Second. And we'll get to that motion. What I was going to say before I was interrupted by our counselor is that these are the, these are some of the arguments we're hearing so far.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. That's not your responsibility.
As Chair. Counselor Starr, I am the Chair of this meeting. Please let me finish.
Rule on your point of order that I just made.
Counselor Starr, let me finish.
I would move to appeal the decision of the Chair.
On your amendment. So where we're at right now, please just let me finish.
You're out of order, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Starr.
Do your job that you're supposed to do. You're out of order.
Can I please finish?
No, there's a motion on the floor, and I made a point of order, and I'm asking you to rule on it.
It's the Weekly Starr Show, so.
Counselor Starr, can I please finish? And then we will vote on your motion. Thank you.
No.
I would ask.
Order, and I need a ruling so that we can move forward.
Okay. I would just like everyone just to lower the temperature a little bit, please. Please. I know there's a lot of emotions in the room. That's okay. Everybody's emotional. All I'm going to do is talk about the arguments we've heard, and then we'll vote on this, this motion. Is that all right, ma'am? You're next? Okay, thank you. So what we're hearing tonight is that they're from our last speaker.
Mr. Mayor. I would ask the parliamentarian to weigh in on whether or not we have to address the point of order. When a point of order is brought up, it needs to be addressed.
Mr. Mayor, I would just say that you would need to address the point of order, make a ruling on it, and if the council doesn't agree with it, then they can appeal it.
What is, what is the point of order?
What is the point of order?
The point of order is that you're out of order by recapping what we've done tonight.
Okay.
That's not the Chair's responsibility at this point.
On that point of order?
It doesn't need a second.
All right, well, I'm going to move on from that then, since there's no support. And again, what I'm hearing tonight, and then we will move on.
Mr. Mayor, you have to rule on the point of order. There has to be a vote taken. Roberts' rules will say, do we sustain the ruling of the Chair, which he can continue? Or do we vote with Counselor Starr that you're out of order? That has to be ruled on.
All right, so the point of order is that I am out of order by recapping where we're at so far in our meeting. Is that correct, Counselor Starr?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we'll vote on if I'm out of order by recapping the events of the evening thus far.
I believe we're allowed to have a discussion on this.
We can have a discussion on that, absolutely. Go ahead, Counselor Kylie.
Well, I don't see how a simple recap is doing this any harm. I would agree that I would like to see continuation of people who want to present that they're allowed to do that. But I, I don't know how a recap at this point in time is, is considered to be out of order.
The Chair has no desire to end public input right now. I'm just going to recap the comments that we've made, so that's, that's my input on that. So we will keep going with public input.
But we do have to vote.
But we do have to vote.
Point of order.
Right. So is there other discussion on that? Counselor Breckie, go ahead.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I also have problem with your recapping. I don't think you have authority to do that, and I don't think it's your job. How you recap it and how you view things, we may all view them in a different way, and I think it's inappropriate for you to try to influence this in this way and summarize it in your way. We have all been present, and we don't need to be briefed on this. We can make our own decisions. And I have really strong objection to it. I'm, I'm kind of shocked that you're doing it, quite frankly. So I will certainly be voting against proceeding this way.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Erickson, go ahead.
Just question, I guess I, I don't, I don't know what I'm missing, but I don't think we vote on a point of order. A point of order is made, there doesn't have to be a second on a point of order, and then the parliamentarian or the attorney, I don't know which one, needs, needs to address that point. From that time, if that point of order is deemed out of order, then we would move on to the motion and the second. So it's my understanding the point of order doesn't take a second, and that Stacey or Tom, whoever wants to weigh in on that and, and let us know what the ruling is, and then we'll move on to the vote based on what Counselor Starr had said. Thank you.
Counselor, a, a point of order does not necessarily need a, a vote automatically. If the mayor or the presiding officer were to make a decision, certainly that would be subject to appeal. However, the presiding officer always has the opportunity to throw it out to the group for a vote if he so chooses.
Okay, so can you tell me what your ruling was then? I'm sorry, I, I missed what the ruling was.
There's not, there's not a ruling. The point of order was that the presiding officer can't conduct a recap. I would presume if there's going to be a vote, it would be, can the presiding officer conduct a recap?
Okay, so.
I'm going to skip right to let's vote as a courtesy. So I overruled it, but we'll go right to a vote. But we can continue with discussion.
So on the question of can there be a recap? Council members.
Hold on, Counselor Selberg wants to speak here.
Well, every time we've had situations like this since I've been on the council, and we've had lots of people speak, we've always let them speak, but we have recapped. And I've never had anybody, or seen anybody throw a fit before, so this is new to me. If we're going to keep having public input and you just want to do a recap again, I don't know what that hurts, but.
Counselor Nitzer, go ahead.
It is true, we have recapped in the past. This is a close call. I kind of wish I had like, you know, Roberts' Rules of Order, but I, I also don't necessarily see the reason that a recap is necessary. I, I don't know that the mayor intends to do this, but it, the concern I've had even under previous mayors is it, it, it can be a subliminal message to people to not come and speak if, if something has already been covered. So I, I do have some concern about that. This one's a tough one.
All right, thanks. All right, any other discussion? Then we can take a vote on the point of order.
Councilmember Sale?
I just ask you to restate the question we're voting on.
Shall the presiding officer be able to, be able to recap the comments made thus far?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
I'm confused about what the question is we're voting on. Sorry, I couldn't hear.
We're not voting on a, a point of order.
Counselor Starr, please, please wait. Counselor Breckie, you have the floor.
Could you please restate again what we're voting on? What does the yes vote get me, and what does a no vote get me?
A yes vote will simply allow the Chair to recap the comments we've heard thus far. A no will not allow that.
Okay, my vote is no.
Okay.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
No.
Selberg?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before you announce a vote, I want to change my vote to no.
Okay, that, that passes five to three. So back to public input. So here's where, here's where we sit. All, all opponents to the ordinance tonight have spoke tonight, so thank you for that. Lot of discussion about how divisive this has become, which I don't disagree there. There, there's no emergency in place. Data showing mandates simply don't work. It's time to get back to normal. Hospital beds are not being used up. Plenty of hospital capacity. Masks are dividing our community. They're, they're leading to bullying, and they are leading to broken relationships. Again, masks don't work, they're unconstitutional, damage to our kids. It's not in sync with what the state is doing and what our governor's doing, in that there are monetary costs despite the fact that there's not a fine. A lot of time spent on the divisiveness of the issue. And so that's where we sit right now. We know those items, you can certainly speak to those. But if there's new items that people want to speak to outside of those, we sure welcome those comments as well. So that's all we wanted to get done. Sorry for all that work, make you guys stand longer. Welcome, ma'am, you can go ahead and state your name and speak.
Good evening, my name is Michelle Klemic, and I have to share an experience but to also add something new. Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I do share the similar sentiments as previous speakers here tonight and from meetings past. I want to thank them for encouraging me to come and speak up. After I heard a mother share what her daughter was experiencing at school because she did not wear a mask, I thought it was important to share my son's experience. He attends high school, so it's probably not as difficult for him to manage the pressure younger students receive for them not wearing a mask. My husband and I checked in with my son, how's it going? Are other students pressuring you? Are the teachers treating you differently? And he said that his friends don't care. His friends are his friends, they hang out at school, they hang out after school, it does not matter. Some of the teachers would say that masks were mandated when they are not. Or they would go as far to guilt trip him into wearing one, and he would not. Second semester, we registered him for virtual school. I also want to bring to your attention the masks littering our parks and playgrounds. We took our family to Laurel Oaks over the weekend, and we counted eight masks on the ground. I want to pick up, I want the neighborhood to look nice, but I'm not going to touch those. To close, my family appreciates your concerns for our health, we do. But that burden is not yours to carry. Information you provide, our family doctor provides, the hospital, the CDC provides, gives us the choice, allows us to make that choice. Please, vote no to extend the mask mandate. Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. Good evening, sir.
My name's Adam Broine. I'm a father, a business owner, and an Augustana graduate. I'd like to speak today about Alexander Solzhenitsyn. He was an outspoken Soviet dissident. And I have a quote to share with you from him. "The simple step of a courageous individual is not take part in the lie. One word of truth outweighs the world." There's a lot of medical evidence that masks not only don't work, but collect bacteria, cause dental, lung, all sorts of other issues. But, but, but the biggest, the biggest problem with this whole thing is the moved goalposts. The original purpose of this, of this mandate has long since passed. It's been changed several times. If this council struggles to relinquish such minor emergency powers, when the original justification for those powers has passed, then I fear what each and every one of you is capable of given further power.
Thank you, Adam. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Paula Miller. I'm a certified health specialist. My family and I moved to South Dakota in the fall largely because of Governor Noem's handling of COVID. She consulted constitutional lawyers. She knew what she was allowed to do and not to do, and she put the responsibility for our health back in our hands. When Sioux Falls decided to enforce the mask mandate, I have to be honest, we were pretty surprised. We were living in South Dakota after all. And when the city council decided, I asked my husband, how can you guys ignore the Constitution? How can you ignore the wishes of the people that you're representing? And from the last meetings and from last week and from today, it looks like about 99.9% of us do not want a mask mandate. This mandate doesn't only affect our freedoms, but it negatively affects our personal health. And that's largely why I'm here, because I have a couple of questions to ask you. One, have you ever heard of mask mouth? The gentleman before me alluded to that. It's a variety of oral issues that occur from wearing masks on a regular basis. Gum disease is one of these issues. A month ago, a new study came out that shows a person with gum disease who tests positive for COVID is nine times more likely to die than someone who tests positive without gum disease. Dentists have been warning us about this since last summer. So my question to you is, how does a mask mandate, and this is not just encouraging people to wear them, but this is a mandate, how is that helping the people of Sioux Falls if it's increasing your chances of dying because of having gum disease if you test positive for COVID? The British Medical Journal states that when masks create a human environment where COVID can remain active, it can increase the viral load and cause a failure in your immunity. So again, I ask you, how is a mask mandate protecting the people of Sioux Falls if masks create a perfect environment for COVID to thrive and your immunity to fail? Dr. James Mahon stated that mask wearing is increasing facial rashes, fungal infections, bacterial infections, and bacterial pneumonia. And you can go to the National Institute for Health website and see that bacterial pneumonia was the number one cause of death during the Spanish Flu. Dr. Fauci himself wrote a paper about this. So how, again, is a mask mandate that can increase bacterial pneumonia, the number one killer during the Spanish Flu, be helping the people of Sioux Falls? My final question to you is this. We're in the Constitution as the power for the government to coerce Americans to wear masks explicitly defined. And I will answer that for you, it is not. This virus has a 99.4 survival rate on its worst day. Wearing a mask is a personal health risk, and if you want to wear it, that's fine. But if you don't want to wear it, that is also your choice, and it should not be mandated by the city council. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paula. Good evening, sir.
Hi, my name is Anthony Mirziants. I'm the State Chair for Young Americans for Liberty. I'm a college student at SD Mines, and Sioux Falls is my hometown. I can tell you Rapid City is doing just fine without a mask mandate. As you look around here, you've got a lot of angry voters and a lot of angry business owners. So you have a very simple choice in front of you. You either end this tyrannical power grab and give people their freedom back, or you continue to tear this community apart, and you get people angry enough to start organizing against you in your next election. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Anthony. Come on up, ma'am. Come on up.
I have a video I'd like to show Kathy Sullivan, but I don't, I've asked around, I don't, not quite sure.
I don't think we can show a video, I'm sorry. I don't think we can show a video, I apologize.
Can I play it for you then? You want, I'll listen to the audio?
It's, it's your time, yeah.
Four people.
I have an idea, you can maybe put it under the projector so they can see it.
Do you think they can hear it then?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the volume, but they can see it that way.
This video is, well, it'll explain itself. There's, you've got scientists, PhD, you have a former congressperson, and you have a very high esteemed lawyer. So I'll go ahead and play it. Better than me trying to say it.
They are. All right. Ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, I apologize, but I was just informed that videos are, ma'am. I was just informed videos are banned by city ordinance.
Then I'll, it's Dr. Moran. I know you guys talked about, you know, maybe we have to wait till the vaccine's given to some, to so many different people in different levels, and we might need to wear masks longer and things like that. And what I'd like to say is, this is a great video. It's, it's been out there, and you, you've got the most highly esteemed. Judy Mikulovitz worked with Fauci, Dr. Fauci. She knows him personally. And Dr. Moran came out and he said, you've got to quit calling this a vaccine. It is not a vaccine. It doesn't even meet the legal terms of a vaccine. Doesn't immunize, and it doesn't keep you from spreading. If it doesn't do that, it's not. But they've got, they brought it in under and used the term, and they've got all the benefits of saying it's a vaccine. All those, Moderna, Pfizer, Johnson, AstraZeneca, or I probably didn't say that one right. But the bottom line is, it's not, it's a treatment. I've, I've been taking a treatment. I was here last week and I spoke. I don't worry about the people I'm around. And I, as far as wearing a mask or not wearing a mask. And the treatment's there. I want the option to use the treatments I want to use, not what I'm told to use by other people that want to do my health care. And Dr. Moran said, you've got to quit calling it a vaccine. It's not a vaccine, it's a treatment. That's something you can look into, and I could pass this on to anybody that wants to see it. And you've got Dr., you know, Judy Mikulovitz. She put her whole career on the line in, in. She put her whole career on the line, and, and I don't know if many of you folks know her. She wrote the book, Plandemic. You can't even get a book to come out when it came out and everything hit in March and April like that did. That just doesn't happen. She describes everything that's going on very explicitly. You've got an mRNA. An mRNA is something that, it's not a vaccine. And it is something that can genetically change in your cellular level. You had Dr. Jones here, I heard, at one time for a period of time. This man would be awesome telling you what this can do. But when you start messing, this is not something you can take back. And if a mask is not going to help with this, you know, and you're going to wait till you get a vaccine and everybody's given a vaccine, I don't want to, I want to do the treatments I want to do, and I want to have the freedoms in this country. And I agree with the previous speakers. Governor Noem, oh my gosh. She, I totally agree. She, she doesn't, you know, we have, you know, she goes by the Constitution and, and by the, the science. This is a science, and that's what, I mean, I really appreciate people like that, that do that. And so I'm asking you, where's your science? And I know there's people that don't agree, and they want to give us our freedoms. Please, don't pass this mask mandate any longer.
All right. Thank you. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, mayor, councillors. My name is Dr. Tamara Grove. I live on the east side of Sioux Falls, where crime is growing at a fast rate every day. I wasn't going to share this, but I feel like maybe I should. When I was in kindergarten, the last day of school, I always knew I was different, and I knew why I was different, but I didn't know that it would be a problem until the last day of school, when the boys began to beat me for being black. Every day after that, I was surrounded in a circle. I was kicked, I was punched, I was spit on. They threw sand in my hair. Do you know how hard it is to get sand out of an afro? I faced sexual assault, et cetera. To put a mask on is unbelievable. And I never thought that I would ever have to tell any of you about it, or anybody else, for that matter, because it was a secret thing to not be able to put something over my face and tell you all did this. Change of subject. I like weird data. Here's some weird data. If shutdowns and mask mandates, social distancing and isolation work, where would the safest place in the nation be? Prisons have stringent rules. Some of them put inmates in cells for three days at a time. Smaller cohorts are released for 30 minutes, and then inmates are caged again for another three days. Masks are worn, food is delivered to their, to the inmate's cell, COs wear gloves, masks, and adhere to all of the rules. The safest place, right? Nope. As a matter of fact, it's not. According to The Marshall Project, and it was reported by ABC News in December of 2020, one in five inmates test positive for COVID, a rate that is more than four times as high as the general population. It's weird. It's as if all of this stuff doesn't actually work. I'm going to assume that each of you decided to sit in your chair because you wanted to serve the public, because you wanted to do the right thing. I'm going to assume that you want to leave a legacy that you served well, that you did right by the people. But I want you to know something. You've overstepped your bounds. You stepped outside of the Constitution, and you're stepping on my rights as a human being, as an American. And you're forcing me to do something that I cannot even tell you how much it pains me to do. So I'm speaking to everyone in the sound of my voice in Sioux Falls and in Minnehaha County, and I'm telling you, wake up. Every single one of these people who has forced us to put on a mask, hold them accountable. Do not vote for anyone that forces this. It's not constitutional, and you have no right to do this. You know I respect each and every one of you. Some of you I know personally. I am asking you right now, stop this insanity. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
Evening. My name is Cole Heisey. Councillors, I want you to look around you tonight. Who showed up? Where are the pro-maskers? They're not here. We're here to oppose. We are sovereign people. Look who showed up. Average, everyday, common people who have to deal every day with this mandate. I had a lot of remarks made. I think we all want to get out of here, so I'll keep it a little short. This last year, our community, it's been, it's been a trying time for our community. COVID-19 has driven wedges where before there were none. Businesses, large and small, families have been put under stress. Churches have been closed. For better or worse, it has made us more aware of our relationship with the broader community. Now that we're moving into mid-March and into spring, it's a beautiful day, we need to decide tonight whether we're going to continue or not this mask mandate. We ought to let this ma, this mask mandate expire. I'm not going to argue whether masks work or they don't work. I'm taking a principled stance, rather, in saying that it's not the government's role to mandate people wear masks. As Americans left and right, we have always believed in personal responsibility, leaving these matters up to the individual and their families. I believe we need to have trust in the people of our city and respect their rights. The great thing about freedom and responsibility is that individuals, families, and businesses can still wear masks, recommend them, and you can social distance the boot. Rapid City got rid of their mandate, and they are doing just fine. As a community, we need to leave behind the negativity, the shaming, the harassment that many of us have experienced. You've heard their stories tonight. We have an opportunity, probably got some water tonight, to dispel much of what has happened and move forward as a community in a very positive way. Sioux Falls will be better without a mask mandate. Thank you.
Thanks, Cole. Good evening.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Tyler Bonnage. So I got some daddy here that I hope to weave together, so bear with me. Brevity's not my thing, but I'm going to give it a college try here. So here we go. So back in 2015, the first randomized trial of cloth masks was conducted by an Australian research group that was funded by 3M. So they have a financial gain of getting a result in their favor out of this. And the result that was found in the study, being the first of its kind at this time, and they also went into a full-time high-risk ward looking over 1,600 hospital healthcare workers. The results is the rate of all infection outcomes were highest in the cloth mask arm. And so they cautioned against the general populace of wearing them, but they're mindful of PPE for nurses and so forth. But, so the, operating on this data that they had, you know, I have Stat News where back in 2018, 80,000 people died of the flu that year. They never said to implement, you know, how, you know, like mask or anything like that, but they did, you know, Dr. Redfield at the time, he's quoted by saying that, "I'd at least like to see more people get vaccinated as a way to kind of mitigate the spread of the flu at that time." Again, I have an article here in Time Magazine. They said that the, that influenza epidemic of the 2017, 2018 flu left in hospitals and urgent care centers in every state are responding to extraordinary measures. They're asking staff to work overtime, setting up triage tents, restricting friends and family, canceling elective surgeries, a lot of continuity with what we experienced back in the fall. And this is what they're doing. They said the hospitals were just managing but barely. They're working on people in the waiting room themselves or in hallways. So another one in 2019, Michael Osterholm out of the University of Minnesota, he's quoted by saying, "Very few institutions anywhere in the country have surge capacity, meaning unused capacity, just sitting there waiting for a crisis to happen. It would be like a manufacturing plant overbuilding its manufacturing capacity so that once a year, when they get the potential short-term increase in order numbers, they can use that capacity." That just doesn't make sense for them financially, and it's the same thing with healthcare. So I, too, was mindful, I didn't want to overwhelm the hospitals, and I believe a lot of nurses came out in November, and I wanted to show support with their work. Now, what does that mean with COVID now? It's like, cool story, bro, that's the flu, but COVID is, it's a novel virus, so what do you got there? Well, you're going to see a lot of continuity with the data that come out. So we, the Danish mask study is the first of its kind with COVID-19. It's peer-reviewed, so it's not just a ragtag group of scientists kind of throwing this together. Their peers looked at it. It's the first of its kind, the first randomized controlled trial of scene of masks are really efficacious towards mitigating the spread of COVID-19. So this was published in November of 2020, and there, should have tabbed this out here. So there is a total of 6,000 participants. There was 3,000 of them were relegated to the cloth mask arm, whereas 3,000 were actually in the controlled study group where they didn't have masks. So they assumed daily life, and at the end of the day, 1.8% of those who wore masks in that, that group got COVID-19. Whereas those who didn't have masks that lived life just as much as the other one in the other group, it was 2.1% got COVID-19 with that. And so there, the conclusion out of that is that it didn't actually make a difference in that. Norway, for instance, you know, they, they want to know what was best for their country. And so Norway in June said this, given, here it is. Assuming that 20% of people infectious with SARS-CoV-19 do not have symptoms, assuming a risk reduction of 40% of wearing masks, 200,000 people would need to wear a face mask to present, to prevent one new infection per week. So 200,000 compliance to prevent one new infection per week. And that is what their epidemiologists came to the conclusion and what they operated on. So with the limited time I have, Michael Osterholm again. He, he came out in June, and he said that masks give people a level of protection they don't have, and then since they have it on, they're going to put themselves into situations that they wouldn't have otherwise because of, again, this false sense of protection. And with that said, and it's been referenced earlier, the Great Barrington Declaration. These are epidemiologists from the top three universities in the world, from Oxford, Harvard, and Stanford. These guys aren't flat-Earth junk scientists, and they still have a job, and they're against lockdowns and masks, and they actually have the degree to back up their facts. And they're saying that this, you need to let the, you know...
Thanks, Tyler. Appreciate it, ma'am.
Okay.
All right.
I tried, so.
You did good. You did good. You used all your time.
Yeah.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Mike Elliott. I'm the chief medical officer at Vera McKinnon Hospital. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of Vera as a health system. We are in support of the vaccine effort. We are in support of all of the mitigation strategies. We are in support of masking, and we are in support of the continuation of the mask mandate as proposed. Happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Mike.
Approval from Vera McKinnon, anyway, and the Vera Health System.
Okay. We'll keep going through public input, and there may be questions for you when we go to discussion, so. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Joe Sedgilon from Sanford Health, VPMO of Children's Pediatric Intensive Care by Training. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. We are busy working on vaccinating. Come Thursday, we'll have 50,000 vaccine doses done. We continue to encourage preventive care to return and work on mental health as well. We've also started a series of debriefings for our, for our staff during those surge capacities. We are in support of CDC guidelines, which stand for and support effective mitigation measures, including masks, washing hands, and avoiding large gatherings, and staying home when you're sick. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jill. Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? I know with microphones, it's always important. I want to thank you for your service of all and for being here tonight and attentively listening to all these people.
What's your name, ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Penny Baybridge.
Okay. Thanks, Penny.
I moved to Sioux Falls in 2009, and this is the first time I've ever attended a city council meeting. And I want to apologize for neglecting you till now. I assure you, I'll be more attentive to your needs and, you know, serving the community. You've heard many voices tonight. There are a lot of different opinions. And you're, you represent and make decisions that affect all people of the community. And what you're facing here is an answer to a simple question. Who has more rights? The people who want to wear masks or the people who do not? And your capacity as representatives, it's not about picking favorites, and I'm sure you've sat here many times and have to set your feelings aside to be, you know, doing what's good for all. And your job is to defend the rule of law. And there's no law in place to restrict people's ability to breathe or to freely associate. Masks, while may, you know, restrict some bacteria, also restricts oxygen. And we have a lot of people that are in, having an ability, you know, my family members got COVID, breathing problems afterwards. Masks only exacerbated that by not being able to breathe in more oxygen. People who want to take precautions constantly do so, but we shouldn't have it where people are being uncivil with one another. And we're seeing more and more of that, with people making that choice. I know that your intentions, I assume the innocence of people, and that your intentions when you started this was with the information you had to defend and protect the people of the community. But over time, we can see how those decisions and how things may change, and we need to confront reality. The evidence is out, and it's time to move on to remove the mask requirement. And I'd like to ask, if I could, each of you, that when you make a decision and vote, to let us know what your opinion is and why you vote the way you do, because you've been listening to us, and it's important for us to know why you feel and vote the way you do. And I thank you very much.
Good evening.
Mike Zirich of Sioux Falls. I just, just want to talk about, I think, something different. Is this good policy or bad policy? What, what kind of policy are we setting for example for the rest of the state and the, and the people? But, look what, look what a man, what is a mandate, giving someone authority to do something or, or do some, or say something? How do we define, so who, who are we giving authority to? The ci, the city don't have no enforcement to it, but I think in the, in the, in the original resolution that the mayor had, 14720, it actually defines who we give authority to. We're giving authority to the citizens to, to rat them out, enforce the masks, tell them to do this, do that. And then you're, you're giving, you're letting the businesses enforce their policy. So the, the businesses are being forced to, to protect their good customers and trespass, and, and then they end up trespassing the, the bad ones. So what, what do you, a, a good friend of mine gave me this quote one time, I, I believe it's true in this, in this situation. When you mandate or order someone to do something, all you're doing is getting a rebel. And that's, I think that's what you're seeing throughout the whole city. People are willing to stand, are not willing to honor it, or talking out against it, and we've seen what happened, you know? We get, we get stuff like that. Just a person, a rebel is what? Just a person who rises up in opposition, and you get nothing but bad blood. What's the results of the policy? What hap, what, what happens? According to state law, I mean, we put in all these, we put all these rebels, we, we accuse them of, of making people sick. We're, so we got a state law that says class one misdemeanor. And then what's the next step? The state has the, the states conducting the contact list, encourage, or encouraging everybody to get, get tested positive. And, and what's that? As soon as we get tested positive, we're being told to, to, again, report at least everybody that we've come in contact with, and that's putting more people on the list. And then, then if you're paying attention to what they're doing in peer, you got SP3, SP4, that, you know, that just allowing the Department of Health to, to order, to order us all to get, get certain medic, medication, sanctions to, to, to the vaccines. So I, I end, end with a question. How long do we, how long do we keep this executive, how do we, how long do we keep this emergency in, in force? In one year, five years, five years? The, if you look at the, the mandate, the effective date, it says that we're going to terminate at a phase one, se, phase one, what is it, five? But if you read it backwards, you're, you're really giving the Department of Health the power to, to give us recommendations on extending it in the future. So I think what we should be careful of is the negative effects of this, of this policy. I mean, at, at some point, oh... of this, of this policy. I mean, at, at some point, what's gonna happen to our economy? Are we gonna, we're losing all our small businesses? The restaurants are closing? Businesses are struggling? We're trying, doing whatever we can to survive. So, at some point, we just take on more federal funds. And I think that's what, really what the emergency is all about. If you watch what the news, will this stop until we take more federal funds? Because at some point, we lose tax revenue. Can I just end, I'll end with this. I'm not gonna repeat it. You can look this up. But this is my favorite part of the constitution, the state constitution, which is more important to me than the federal constitution. Just pay attention to the five, seven words, to the seven words. Adherence, process of staying on defense, justice, conformity to human, divine, human and divine law, moderation, avoidance of excess and excess streams. Then you got temperament, showing restraint. You got fragility with our tax money, and, and then, and good policy. And then, and lastly, the, the most important one, fundamental principles. And I urge you to vote no on this, on this ordinance, and then support the mayor on his resolution, because I think the mayor is actually listening to what the people want. I mean, he, I thank you for, I mean, I, I noticed on, on your resolution, you changed section five. I think that's more respectful than encouraging people to patronize certain businesses. I think you're, at least you're asking them to be respectful of the businesses themselves. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Good evening, ma'am. Come on up.
Laura Hubbell. Good evening, Council and Mayor. I'd like to invite all of you to a debate. And this is about the science of, of COVID. And I'd like those doctors over there to come to the debate also. And then also, like, I think it was your, some professor who said that your constitutional rights end at the tip of his nose. I want him at that debate also. Our, our group has already hosted Christine. She's visited with us. And we'd like to have a debate on this issue, actually before you, you rule on, on these issues. I was prepared to come here tonight with both barrels loaded. But then, I opened up my computer, and I was gonna get all the information just to shoot it at you. And I see this really neat article by Dakota News Now on the mayor and his family. And I kinda go, God, he's young. He's about the same age as my son. He, he's got kids like my grand, about my grandson kid's ages. And I thought, maybe he's really not trying to be a dictator. Maybe, maybe he just doesn't know. My, my son's a computer guy, and he doesn't know poop from applesauce about science, you know? And, and I can imagine him being a mayor, he probably did the same thing. In fact, his house is very similar to your house. He's got the same, in fact, even looked like him. And so, that's kinda why I kinda changed my mode here a little bit. But I'm, I'm still prepared to, to argue against the resolution and the ordinance, because almost everywhere "as" on there is not true. It's not a novel virus. We could debate that. It's, it's not, it's not the emergency. We can debate that. Why can't we just have a, a debate? We'll host it. We'll have your side. We'll have our side. Get every, everything hashed out. And, you know, I, I've been in, in office also, and I, when I got elected, I thought, oh my goodness, I feel like the dog that caught the, the truck. What do I do now? A legislature? Nobody's ever taught me how to be a legislature, legislator, I should say. And, and I, I know what you're, you're feeling. What do I do? Where do I go to be a mayor? What do I do? Where do I go to be a council member? One place you don't go, you don't go to the CDC, because they're bureaucratic, they're opinionated, they're not altruistic scientists. You don't go to the World Health Organization. There's a man named Tedros there, and he killed many of his own patients, or own people. And you don't go to the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber of Commerce, they were 100% behind Obamacare, which is a complete socialist takeover of our health systems. And I understand your confusion, because even our own government, our own governor has shut down South Dakota. She says she doesn't. She got very famous saying she doesn't. Right here. Yeah, she absolutely shut down South Dakota. This is what she said. And I can see your confusion, because you think that the governor didn't shut down South Dakota, and yet she shut down all businesses, so why can't you and have the same, you know, notoriety? This is what she said. "Any enclosed business that promotes public access, eleven, shall suspend or modify business practices as recommended by the CDC, just like you guys are doing, if there are no more than 10 people or who cannot social distance six feet apart," something like that. I'm paraphrasing. "Consider businesses' models that do not involve public gatherings." This is our, our, our governor. "Consider business arrangements intended to support the critical infrastructure sectors defined by Homeland Security for the purpose, an enclosed business means a bar, restaurant, brewery, cafe, casinos, coffee shop, recreational or athletic facility, health club, and entertainment venue." Yeah, we did shut down. So, I, I know that you're trying to follow her example by doing the same thing, and, and you're getting all this, this grief here. And thank you for facing it. She won't face us. So again, I invite you and your resources, be they lawyers or doctors, whoever, we want an open debate before we live under mandates that we believe are dangerous for our health, that violate our civil rights and violate our constitutional rights. We do not believe, like some socialist professor at USD who says our rights stop at the tip of our nose, of his nose. But we believe our, our rights are from God, and they're given to us by Him, and the Constitution should be your textbook. You shouldn't listen to what other people say about the Constitution. The Constitution is your textbook. If you wanna know where to go to be a legislator, to be a city council, to be a mayor, you have to go to the Constitutions. That is your guide on how to rule over us. And once again, thank you for what you've done. I know you've taken a lot of heat. I can see your confusion, because we're getting mixed messages from the governor all the time. So I just welcome you to our debate. Anytime, get ahold of us. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Laura. Good evening, sir.
Tim Stanga. It's nice to see all these people out here, and every single one of these people are speaking from their heart. We're standing outside in the other room, realizing that we are starting to listen to the people in this room, because we were coming out stating, well, somebody said this, somebody said this, somebody said that. So somebody was writing something down at this meeting. I wanna thank a couple of the city councilors on how they spoke last week. Lot of people outside these doors commend you too, on stating how you were looking at the, the mandate, and how you were gonna vote. There's more people out there than you think. But I'll tell ya, I went to the, whenever I go to a city function, nine times out of 10, people are not wearing masks. So if it's mandatory on a city property, why aren't people wearing masks? Because they're tired of it. And there's nobody that's coming up and telling you to put a mask on. I wonder why? Because they don't wanna take the flak? Or they don't wanna be, don't wanna intimidate somebody? I couldn't tell you. But I know, when they came out with this mandate, it stated, we're gonna go by the numbers. There were two people in this group that are bringing this up. They said, we're gonna stick by the numbers. If the numbers come down, then we'll look at relieving this mandate. But now, all of a sudden, oh, no, we gotta push it off to peer. Imagine that. And then, once peer lets go, what are we gonna do? Say, okay, you guys gotta have a white card to come in on city property. Show us that white card that you got your, your shot. I will guarantee that I will not get a shot. I will guarantee I will not wear a mask. And I'll guarantee I won't get sick, because I take care of myself. And if these people can't take care of themselves, you people, you guys can't take care of yourselves. If you want your families to wear a mask, that's fine. Nobody has a problem with that. But when you're telling people that they have to wear a mask, that's overstepping your bounds. Everybody in here, some of these people are off emotions. Some, some of these people get it. It's common sense. A business wants everybody to wear a mask, and that's what they're gonna say. Hey, we want you to wear a mask. If you don't wanna wear a mask, we don't want you to come in our facility. That's where this all started at. And I think it was mainly came from downtown. Because when downtown people speak, we tend to listen. We don't listen to the public. We listen to downtown, because there were a lot of people that didn't wanna go in them little shops. They just said, we're going someplace else and shop. Well, they were losing business. So what we had to do is we had to get together with the mayor, and some of the city council, and this is how we took care of downtown, is we're just gonna mandate it straight across where you can't come on city properties, which, again, mayor, they do come on city properties without masks. They go on functions without masks from the, in the city buildings. It's just amazing on how things are being done. These people sitting behind me, their chairs aren't six foot apart. We wanna go by the CB, CDC. Every time somebody walks up to this podium, it should be watched. Am I not correct? Dr. Fauci tells us we gotta wear two masks. One mask isn't enough. Who do you believe? The CDC lies to people. Dr. Fauci is a total liar. And if you can't trust the city, the city, on giving you the, the information that you wanna hear, because they're going by Dr. Fauci and the CDC, the citizens of Sioux Falls and the citizens of South Dakota are gonna go down the river.
All right. Thank you, Tim. All right. Good evening, sir.
Travis Mulmer. I live in Sioux Falls. I have to start by asking God to just help me tell the truth. I don't want what's coming out of my mouth to not be true. And I believe truth comes from God. I would like to thank the city council for the display of discord earlier, actually. It's good to see conversation and a resolution. There's decorum, there's rules and stuff for that. So it's good to see that. It'd be nice if we, if we have more of a conversation. I mean, when we come up here and we talk to you, and there's no exchange, there's no questions asked. I'll be available afterwards for questions if anybody wants to ask me, along with the, the officials from the hospitals. I'm sure a lot of people around here would be too. But I feel like they're the only ones that get the conversation. So, please, just listen more. On the point of truth, I did notice earlier that, I don't like to call people out, but what you were saying about the, the ordinance will, you said it will sunset. It will sunset. But in that ordinance, there's language to extend it if you choose to, in that same ordinance. So, please, revise the ordinance before passing it, if that's what your real intent is. That's all I have to say.
Thanks. Thanks, Travis.
Good evening.
Hi there. My name is Brad Lindworm. From Sioux Falls. I'm the state director of 40 Days for Life, which is an organization that helps women in crisis pregnancies. Life is more than a birth issue, though. And so, what I wanted to share tonight is a different angle. You've heard the data. And I respect you guys for your service to our community, and for your willingness to listen. I'm sure it gets to be quite laborious as it goes on and on. So I'll keep my, my remarks brief. I wish I had a good joke to kinda ease the tension in the room. That might be helpful. But what I've noticed is a couple people actually have the courage to bring God into this issue, and I'm not afraid to go there. This isn't a religious meeting, but our rights are given by God. And I'm just, I'm tired of men, and most of the city council is men, so I'm gonna speak to you, not being true men. It's time to step up and be a man and lead this community, because, you know, I deal with women a lot with my organization, with the nonprofit. And people need to be handled with tenderness and care and love. But it's not inspiring to a woman who's been through a tough circumstance to just be given orders. And I think that's how this community feels, is that they're just being ordered around. And, and so I'm just calling the men to action on the city council. I mean, we've got a woman who represents what most people want, and we've got some others here. I know some of you personally, and I know some of you are people of faith. And I'll just finish with this. My life verses 2 Timothy 1:7, "God did not give us a spirit of fear, but of power, love, and a sound mind." Our community does not feel empowered by masks. They don't feel love from masks. They don't feel like they're having a sound mind. I can assure you of that. And why can't we just come back to freedom, where we just enjoy one another, and go about our business, do what's smart? We're not fools. We know how to take care of our own families. So give us that opportunity to do so. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Brad. Come on up, ma'am. Anyone else here to speak? You can go ahead and get in line here.
Thank you. My name's Katie DeShepper. I'm from Sioux Falls. I'm a piano teacher. And I was, I was wanting to say that we all need to have more compassion and mercy for each other. So on the other side of the coin, I would like to ask the CEOs of Avera and Sanford, for the people in our community who are legitimately, have let, there is a point where fear becomes unhealthy, when it's not grounded in truth. And it has the potential to cause people to do things they normally wouldn't do. And so, I'm wondering if there's a possible way that they can offer, like, reduced costs, something, help for people who legitimately are still, like, unhealthily afraid. I, I know I talked to some, one of my students yesterday, and she hasn't seen her mother, and neither has my student in a year. He used to, she used to bring him to her lessons, you know, she's by herself here. I don't know. I feel bad for that level of fear, because it's really not, it's unhealthy, you know? It's, it's unhealthy. And we are not just physical beings. We're only our physical health matters of spirit. We are spiritual. We are intellectual beings. We are emotional beings. We're not robots. We, please, rather than-
Katie, adjust, adjust the counsel. Okay, Katie?
We make laws and mandates for the common good. Hey, let's, let's consider the common good. You're given this authority for the common good. Now that we've kind of seen some of these other issues, is this the common good, you know? So, and I ask you to please vote no. Vote no, please. At this point, it's beginning to violate my conscience. So, and that has, my conscience and yours, and all of us here, we have a right to that. That's how we, God gave us that. That's how we form, you know, our morality, and what is right and what is wrong. So, at a, at a certain point, this is going against my conscience. But please, please, let's offer some help to the irrational fear. Let's not support it by continuing this. That only enables the fear. It's, it's not helpful. Please. So that's all I had to say. And thank you.
Thanks, Katie. Good evening, ma'am.
Hi. My name's Janelle Holsing, and I've lived in Sioux Falls for 28 years. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I decided there's a few things that I wanted to say. First of all, I love Sioux Falls, and I'm so thankful for the job that all of you do, because I would personally have a hard time sitting in that seat, making some of the decisions you have to make. But I want you to understand that I love Sioux Falls, and I love this community, and I love living here, and I'm a pro Sioux Falls person. But I'm not pro mask mandate. I don't like, I don't feel it's right for us to be told what to do, and to be told that if we care about our neighbors, then we put a mask on. I care about people, and I care about issues deeply. And I had a friend tell me a few years ago, when it was up for public vote regarding building the Premier Center, they told me, what I really love about you, Janelle, is that when you feel very strongly about something, you're not afraid to stand up and say, hey, you know, this is what I believe in, and this is why you should join me in this- you know, this is what I believe in and this is why you should join me in this cause. So for me to be told that in order for me to be a caring person, that I have to wear a mask to care for other people is wrong. I am a caring person. I am a person who loves fitness and I go on a three and a half mile walk every day through my neighborhood. As I'm on that walk, there are different things that come about as a, such as Sunday, when I was on a walk, my husband actually went with me and we were near one of the high schools and we found a big rusty hedge trimmer in the boulevard. And I said, oh my gosh, I wonder when that got there because I didn't see it the other day. So my husband said, you know, do we leave it there? What do we do? And I said, well, we've only walked a mile and we've still got two and a half miles to go. People are gonna think we're crazy walking through this neighborhood with this rusty hedge trimmer. But he said, you know what? You never know. Somebody could get crazy and see that and pick that up and harm someone else. So we picked it up. My husband carried it the rest of the walk and we took it home and disposed of it so someone else wouldn't get hurt. Another example of caring for my neighbors whom I don't know. One day I was going to Kohl's on Louise Avenue and I saw a young boy that could have been maybe around two years old that was out in the street near the apartments there. And I pulled my car over because I thought there's no one around him and here's this little boy in the street. So I parked my car, go get the boy, start walking him over towards the apartment, thinking he came from there and was about to call 911 for, so that this little boy could be taken care of by the police. When here came his frantic mom saying that he had opened up their patio door from their apartment and gotten away and she was so scared because she couldn't find him. And that was me caring for my neighbor. I don't think that I should have to be forced to wear a face covering to care for my neighbors because I am a caring person and to be told otherwise is wrong. And also, the only other thing that I wanted to say is, now I've lost my train of thought. Sorry.
All right.
I just hope that you vote no on the mask mandate because the, one of the very things that I love about Sioux Falls is the community of people and the people that I meet and how we are caring for each other, how we get together and help each other out when our city has seen tragedies such as tornadoes and floods and things like that. But what I've learned over the past 12 months and especially since probably November is that there's a lot of hatred in this town now that people call out other people and think that this mask mandate has given them the right to be rude to other people. And I, I don't think that's what we want our city to be about. So please vote no. Thank you.
Thanks, Janelle. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, my name is Angelica Vargas. I just wanted to come up here and just say that I am ready to experience my normal life again and not go to a store and be yelled at for not having a mask on. I was kind of depending on you guys keeping your word and not saying, and not extending this mandate. So I think it's really important that you guys know that if you guys say that you're not gonna extend the mandate, don't extend the mandate. Yeah, I, it's tiring to walk into stores. I had a friend go into a store and she was literally, a man went like this and said, these girls don't care about other people. And that's not true. Like, I feel like us, we get a lot of like backlash for not wearing a mask, but that's not me. Like, wearing a mask does not make me an uncaring person like that lady said before me. So I just want to say thank you for your time and consideration.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Come on up, bud. Good evening.
My name is Alexander Klimchuk and I'm against this mask mandate. And I feel like me going into the store, that doesn't affect me getting anyone sick. If I'm following all the rules, I don't think it'd affect me if I'd not wear a mask and I will resist for as long as I can. Thank you.
Thanks, Alexander. Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Emily Wilson. I moved to Sioux Falls about five years ago from Portland, Oregon. I'm a small business owner and I'm very active in our local community. Last year, when quarantine first happened, when the pandemic was first hit Sioux Falls, everybody panicked. Everybody stayed home. Everybody was segregated and afraid. We didn't know, a lot of our small business owners, how we were gonna pull through this. A lot of these small business owners are my friends, my neighbors, my family. I started the Better Together Sioux Falls Facebook group to try to help support each other while we were apart, to save local small businesses. And the community came together in such a heartwarming way. I have seen the amazing amounts of love and support from our community and the amazing things that our city can do. Since then, I have seen more of what the community can do and how we can tear each other apart for not following rules and guidelines that are being pushed and forced. I have seen small businesses fall apart, lose their businesses. These are our friends, our families. These are the people who are brave enough to, to leave their full-time jobs and start something that they believed in because they wanted to provide something different for you and me, for everyone. We wanted to create a better product, service, environment for those of us that are living here in Sioux Falls. I come to you today with so much love, kindness, and patience that everyone here gets to make their own choices when it comes to this. And I feel that educating ourselves on the virus could be our best way of really knowing what we should be doing moving forward. Most people who are wearing a face mask, we are understanding the information that we are receiving through social media, through the news. Is this correct information? Is this helpful? I own a raw food business. I am a huge, huge, just, I'm always speaking about putting your health first and preventative care, boosting our immune systems through food, through vibrating higher than toxicity. I believe that if we can boost our immune systems, that we can overcome this together. But why is this information not being spread? I start to question this. Right now, all of you, the reason that we should be staying six feet apart is because if you are within six feet of another person, touching them or not, we are sharing each other's microbiome. Those of us who have had COVID should not be wearing a mask and we should be mingling with those people who have had COVID because they have built the immunity to it. So we can safely build immunity if we have not had it by being around the people who have. This is how nature intended it to be. So I come to you in love over fear and I also have kindness and understanding for everyone who decides to wear the mask. I just ask that everyone educates themselves. Do know that the voices that have been the loudest so far are the people who are living in fear. The people who are deciding to wear the mask, moving forward, whether the mandate continues or not, are going to continue to wear a mask. Those of us who do not choose to wear a mask are going to continue to not wear a mask whether the mandate continues or not. I believe that everyone should be able to make their own choice and to be smart about it. I'm not asking anyone to go lick each other. I just ask that we be smart about it and be free to make our own choices. The voices that have been loudest so far soon may not be the loudest anymore. I almost didn't come up and speak tonight. I kind of just let everything play itself out. But I realized that that has been part of the problem thus far with not standing up for what we truly believe in when it comes to wearing a mask. So I had to come up and say what was on my heart. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. All right. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item tonight? Please come up. Come on up, ma'am. Good evening.
Thank you for having me tonight. I am not a member of, or I don't live here in Sioux Falls. I live outside of town.
What's your name, ma'am?
I'm sorry. Crystal Miller.
Crystal, great.
I live outside of town. My family comes to Sioux Falls quite often. I am not the only member of my family who struggles greatly with wearing a mask. My family has, I myself have PTSD because of something that happened to me as a child. Additionally, I have breathing issues and a mask, combining those two issues is very difficult. In addition to that, I have children who have varied and multiple diagnoses and masks are also very difficult for them. Since you instituted a mandate here in Sioux Falls, in order to continue with our normal needs and provide for my family, I have been bullied. I have been verbally assaulted. I have been blocked by people trying to uphold the city's mandate. Business owners that I called ahead of time to make sure that I would not be getting in trouble by entering their store without a mask have said I was fine to shop in their stores. And members of the broader public have taken your mandate and they have verbally assaulted me, as I said, blocked me. I have had to stop bringing my children into town. I realized yesterday in horror that it was only the second time that my children have been to Hy-Vee since this mandate started because of the way people have treated me. It is not because of how they treated other people that I witnessed. It is how I myself have been treated because of your mandate. I ask you to vote no on extending this mandate. And I ask you to start doing the work of repairing some of the damage that this has caused in our community. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Crystal. All right. Anyone else here to speak on this item tonight then? Last call. All right. Come on up. It'll be, this will be our last public input for tonight then, ma'am. Hey, you got five minutes. Burn it up.
My name is Sharon and I don't intend to talk very long. I am an educator. I go around our entire Sioux Falls school district. And we need to start looking at the collateral damage that's happening in every one of the classrooms. I have kids who, when I'm trying to teach, they can't hear what I'm saying because I've got a mask over my face. I can't hear what the students are trying to say to me. They're asking me a question and I'm saying, what, what, what? I don't clearly understand what they're asking me. So I know that the school district is probably gonna decide what the school district decides, but I think that the city council and in the direction they take this is, is probably gonna have a lot of influence on the school district. So I am asking that you vote no on the mask mandate for our kids because I love them very much.
Thanks, Sharon. Appreciate it. All right. All right. So that's gonna end our public input on this item. About two, two hours, 10 minutes into, into this on that. And so now I think what we'll do is we'll get a motion on the floor and then we'll move into a discussion and, and questions, anything like that. So Counselor Kylie, you want to kick that off?
Moved to approve. Second, Sale.
All right. So we have a motion by Counselor Kylie and seconded by Counselor Sale to approve this item. And we'll go into discussion amongst the council. Who wants to go first here? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And to those of you that came up, I realize how hard it is to get it in front of the city councils. I remember the first few times that I did it, my knees were shaking. So the fact that you might be nervous is not lost on me. And just gonna make a few quick points. I'm gonna stay within my five minutes. You talked about division. Yes, it has created division in community. My wife and I have lost our best friends over this, people we've known for 40 years. And so I personally feel what you are feeling too, to go along with that. But I was told when I decided to run for city council that if I wanted to be popular, I should sell ice cream and not get into politics. So going with that, there has been some questions about, are we moving the goalposts? Actually, what we're doing is setting the goalposts. We're setting the goalposts to say, when this group of highly vulnerable people get inoculated, get the chance of the vaccine, we will withdraw the mask mandate. We're not setting the goalposts at herd immunity, which is one concept that's been brought out there. I would say at this point, it's like shingling a house. You know you have to shingle the house and the faster you can get shingles up there, the quicker you can get the house done. So the faster that the community can get people vaccinated, the quicker the mandate will go away. I will say that I have great appreciation for my fellow council members because we see several of them sitting here that do not like to wear masks, but yet they're doing it. They're doing it out of respect for those of us that would like everybody to wear a mask. There's a question about the constitutionality of this ordinance. So I turned to the experts this morning, called the city attorney. I said, is our mask mandate constitutional? Have you seen any place where it has, a mask mandate has been ruled unconstitutional? Of course, being a city attorney, he gave me a five-minute answer. It boils down to no. It's never been successfully challenged in the court. And when I get the amount of information that I've got from the public, from the other council members, from the city health department, from every place, it's volumes, it's reams, it's hundreds and thousands of emails, it's videos, it's, it's everything under the sun. So to get it down to the most common denominator, I have to turn to the experts that I respect. The experts from Sanford Health, the experts from Avera Health, and the experts from the city health department. And they're telling us to extend the mask mandate until the highly vulnerable people get inoculated. That's my position and that's why I'm gonna vote in favor of this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion aside, of Counselor Erickson?
Thank you. So first off, I, I want to say thank you to the hospital folks that are here and all of the healthcare workers in our community that have worked countless hours ensuring that when you need that healthcare, they're there for you. We couldn't do it without you and to have two amazing healthcare systems such as yourself. We're really lucky in this community to have a choice on which hospital we want to go to. And it, it's been really trying. I have a lot of friends in the healthcare industry, whether they're nurses, staff, doctors, whatever. And it's been really difficult on them as well. So thank you for everything that your systems are doing. And I, I hate to say it in the uncharted territory, but it is. I want to talk about three different buckets that we really are in. COVID is not just physical health. We truly have three, three buckets. We've got physical health, mental health, and economic health. All three things are extremely important and also risk life regardless. The one I'm gonna just touch on briefly that I think oftentimes is forgotten about, we all love the buzzword mental health and we've got to do something for mental health. I have sat here mostly quietly, but consistently I have voted no on this item. I've been labeled as not caring, disrespectful, blood on my hands, an anti-mask. Let me be clear, I'm not anti-mask. I do wear a mask. I've continually followed the rules. Prior to even when the mandate was in place, my kids play sports. The rule was I needed to wear a mask there. I followed that rule. I just want everyone to please pause for a moment. I want you to consider a different group. A group of people that you can look at, can't pinpoint an issue. They look like you. They look like me. And you know what? They are me. Someone who has experienced abuse physically, emotionally, and sexually. I am that someone. You see me, you would have no idea. You see me, you would have no idea. You'd have no idea that I'm a survivor and I struggle with mask wearing. I don't share this for empathy, I don't share this for sympathy, I don't share this for any other reason than I see you. Tamara, thank you for sharing your story. It sucks. We belong in a group that no one wants to belong in, a group I wouldn't want my kids to belong in or your kids to belong in. We cannot forget about this, this group. I've had to take measures to avoid situations in my life I shared last week, carry a water bottle with me, taken my mask off probably 30 times today so I can breathe before I lose my mind. I've done really well up to this point. So, when you label me anti-mask and you label me as uncaring, please know that's not the case. I'm not anti-mask. I struggle with a burden far greater than most of you can imagine. This last week has been really hard, had night terrors, woken up in the middle of the night because of what I've had to deal with. Thought I put it to rest. I have resources. I can get help. What about those that can't? So, I caution everyone in the community, I'm not just speaking to you, I know you get me, but I'm speaking to my colleagues, I'm speaking to people that do wear a mask, I'm speaking to the people in the medical community. If you see someone without a mask, have some compassion. You don't know what they've been through. I don't want to sit here and share my story. It's really none of any of your business, but I can't sit here and be labeled any longer without saying, "She doesn't care for people and she's going to, you know, this, that, whatever." It's not fair, it's not okay. I hate where we're at today, but we're here and we're doing the best we can as a community. I'm proud to live in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. You travel other places and you're almost famous because of South Dakota. It's ridiculous. I don't, I don't quite understand it. We are there, Sioux Falls. We are vaccinating our most vulnerable people. We are there. The teachers are lining up in droves. The federal program recently announced that, the federal pharmacy program announced Lewis and Hy-Vee got their vaccinations. So, those that choose to do that, I would encourage you to get on that list and keep checking. They have continual cancellations and we are there. We are there in getting those vaccinated. I will again consistently be voting no, not because I'm anti-mask, but because of my story and I think it's important to share. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. All right, is there other council discussion on this item? Counselor Selberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd reiterate what a couple of counselors said already. I'm not going to go through everything I said last week, I'll be brief, but like Counselor Sale said, I certainly have a lot of respect for the counselors here and everything that we've had to each discuss and make decisions and get through these things. I appreciate Counselor Sale and Kylie's efforts and their leadership on this issue over the last few months. It certainly hasn't been easy, but we've kind of moved through this. I appreciate Counselor Erickson's story. I also agree with her to thank the healthcare systems and professionals that are here too as well. And I'd like to thank the people that are here and the people that email us. It gets overwhelming sometimes on the email side, so sometimes if you don't think we're answering, I say this all the time, we'll get there. But I appreciate the passion from all of you that come here tonight and tell your stories, all of you that send your emails. There really is some amazing stories out there, so thank you for sharing with us. As far as where I'm at with this, again, not to repeat exactly what I said last week, but I do believe we were correct early on in approving the mandate when we did, but my support with that included there being a timeline and a deadline. I thought the time was right for supporting that when it started. I agreed to the last extension, but also said at the time that I think it'd take a lot for me to extend it again because again, we're talking a timeline and a deadline and if we keep moving it, well, we're getting past what we were talking about in the first part. So, I do believe, people, you stay diligent, do the drill. We all know, wash the hands, stay at the distance, stay home if you don't feel well, keep doing it. I don't think your city council has to keep telling you to do it. I intend to stay diligent myself, but I will not be supporting this extension. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. All right, any other council discussion on this? All right, I'm not hearing any, any on the phone? Counselor Brecky, yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, like my fellow council members, would like to thank all of the folks that have come and testified to us tonight on this occasion and some of you have repeatedly come. I especially appreciate the respect that you have shown us and the commitment you This mask ordinance that we're passing tonight, if we do pass it, is different than any of the others that have been before us. It's different because it is an exit plan for us. It's different because of Article 3, Roman numeral number 3. It's an exit plan for the government-imposed mask mandate. It's a signal that we're getting out. And I would, like my fellow council members, I would comment that in addition to the testimony that we've received, the very strong testimony we received at each of these meetings, I started keeping a folder early on, just called Mask Mandate, and put all the emails in it. And that's not counting voicemails and that's not counting people cornering me on the street. Of course, I'm not out very much because of isolation, but, so I've tried to look at those and watch those and try to gauge, you know, just what the public does want us to do. And initially, the favor, the mask mandate was, it was like 60 to 1 in favor of it. And slowly over time, however, it started to flip. And the last time, I would say it was about 50/50. And this time, I think it's probably 50/50 in favor and this time, it's, right now, I probably was, what I received before tonight's meeting was more like 10 to 1, 10 to 1 against, 1 in favor. I just want you to know, you know, that we are trying to listen to everybody, you know, and that, you know, I also, over that period of time, there was a lot of folks that said that they weren't coming to the meetings because they didn't feel they could because they were, they were old, they were vulnerable, they were afraid of being in a room full of people who weren't masked. So, again, what I see happening and what I've tried to do in response to that is as the crisis progressed, as the emergency progressed, and as we hit our peak, you saw us start implementing mechanisms that we thought, you know, would help flatten that curve. And we managed to handle our peak and we managed to flatten our curve. And as we started seeing that and seeing that with confidence, now you're seeing us start to dial back, you know, on those restrictions, on those mandates, on those things that we believed we needed to put in place in order to flatten that curve. So, I do believe that we are hearing you, we're listening to you, we're trying to be responsible, you know, responsive to you. And again, I would just reinforce that what we're doing right now is putting in place the exit plan because this provision, this establishes a trigger event which causes the ordinance to terminate automatically. So, upon declaration of the South Dakota Department of Health that vaccinations are available to members of Phase 1 Group E, which is right around the corner, that's that next group, routed that, we're into that group now, they can more handle it with their natural immunities than that vulnerable group. When we get to that group, the ordinance sunsets automatically. And in addition to that, we are also dialing back or we're putting a proposal to dial back, you know, what we did with Essential Service, the garbage hauling. That was up last, that was up last week. And we'll probably continue to try to roll back and roll out and move ourselves into a position where we can be, you know, where we, what we're doing is it's recognizing that we will soon be at a point, you know, with the vaccination process, that we can comfortably as government, you know, exit out safely and return to a voluntary system, which is what we kind of had when we started all this. You know, even though we will still be in a state of emergency for a period of time until we get to that, you know, that flatline place and I guess, you know, we don't know for sure what's going to happen with the variants, you know, so we'll have to pay attention to that. But I do believe that we want to get out of this business as fast as you do, but we want to do it in a responsible fashion. And that's why this ordinance was a collaborative effort. We're at a place where we feel comfortable, we're at a place where the medical feels comfortable, where our public health department feels comfortable. So, we are, we are hearing, we are listening, we're hearing and feeling your passion and compassion. And again, we're wanting to do what you want, we're just a little bit farther out than you are. So, thank you again for keeping us, you know, dialed in to what's going on in the community. And again, I've tried to recognize the shift in the community, but also continue to be laser focused on the health emergency itself and trying to do it in a responsible fashion as we phase out.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Any other discussion on this? Counselor Nitzer, go ahead.
I promised multiple people, including I think my wife, that I wouldn't say anything, but I feel like I, it's just too important. I'll try to keep it short. I've said that every time and I never. You know, with respect, this is, to me, this is, this is bigger than this ordinance. If you just look at that trigger event, you lose sight of the larger principle. If you just look at that, that trigger in a vacuum, because obviously we've moved the goalpost every time it was going to be over. If you believe it's appropriate to make you do something, that for us to make you do something without a shred of proof that you're, that you're a threat to anybody else, this is never over. We're not telling people that if you're infected or you're symptomatic to wear a mask. We're telling you all have to wear a mask. We are telling people to treat each other as if they are, they are a threat to each other. We listened to all of the cruelty tonight. That's on us. That's on us in this ordinance. It's not just the people doing it because we're telling people, we're empowering them to do this, to judge people. It's cruel. If you ignore all of the data, which we keep hearing all of the data, have you heard any of the proponents even try to dispute the fact that mandates don't make a difference? They don't work. They don't work. So, my point is, this is, this is not about just this ordinance. You just have to go back to the principle. If you're going to ignore the data, if you're just going to make decisions based on fear and irrationality, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to be rude. Everybody is at a different place. If you, whatever precautions you think are best for you are fine. Talk to your doctor, make the best decision for you, but let other people make their own decisions and let's honor each other on this. I don't understand how we can continue to split this community apart. So, I just, I just don't know when it's going to be over because the next time something happens, we're going to be right back here again if we just believe in principle it's okay to make you do something without evidence that you're a threat to anybody. This is never over. Thanks.
All right. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Counselor Stark, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor Nitzer, I learned a long time ago not to make those kind of promises to my wife. It's made our relationship a lot more successful. Yeah, I'm in trouble too, so I'll be there by the time we're done, but I may be in trouble for the different difference. I watched healthcare providers, I watched our local hospitals melt down. They ran out of beds. They had to move people to other communities. We had rates that were so high that our people almost broke. We bent and we bent a long ways and we're grateful to a healthcare community that has spent their entire careers. Dr. Elliott, Joe, I appreciate what you do and I appreciate you coming to a pretty hostile environment tonight. What's happened, look around. You guys came tonight and you took over the room, you moved the chairs together, you intimidated people and they left. And then someone got up and said, "Look who showed up."
Can I ask, can I ask, Kate, can I ask the public, this is Counselor Starr's time, he did not interrupt any of your input. This is his time, he has the floor. Thank you for your, thank you for your respect, ma'am. Please respect the counselors that discuss this. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Shar.
I enjoy a good protest too. I've been part of many rallies and I appreciate, you own this room, I agree, but what you did was wrong tonight. All of you spoke about things that were, how you had been intimidated, how you didn't want to do it, and that's what you did tonight. Look at your behavior of what you did and that's exactly what happened. And when you can't have an honest and open discussion about science anymore, where we can't get to the same place, where we bring up studies that aren't. One of the speakers talked about Norway. Norway's on lockdown because their cases are so high. They're just coming off of lockdown. It's a fact and we can't even get to that point in the room today. We talked about Sweden at the beginning of this. What would Sweden do? And how they would turn out the same thing. They took the same laissez-faire attitude and they lost more of their residents than any other neighboring communities and neighboring countries. Again, I get it. It's to our community, it's been a tough thing. Again, I appreciate the folks that are here and I appreciate that you coming out and being heard, but the way...
Can I ask that the audience, if you want, you can go out there and speak to the TV and it's free, but in here, we give the counselors respect when they're speaking, just like they gave to you all when you were speaking. So, just please honor the rules of the room. Counselor Starr, you can continue.
Thank you. Again, thank you to the healthcare workers. This is part of a ramping down. To say that we're not trying to do something to protect our community and our fellow citizens, it's part of living in a community. That's what public health does. If you want to live by yourself, go be. It's not personal responsibility. Personal responsibility now is doing what's best for our community and this is what's best for our community. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
Unless somebody else would like to go first. First of all, I do sincerely say I do appreciate that you are here. You know, that's part of living in a democracy. We can all express our opinion, even though they may differ from one another. Obviously, my opinion on this is different than yours, but I do respect your right to come forward this evening and express your opinion. You know, there's, in the day, in this day and age that we live in, there is just an abundance of information out there and it's available at our fingertips. And that's what makes this so difficult, is there is so much information and so much information out there that contradicts the other side that it's tough to sift through all of it. You have elected to rely on information different than I have, obviously, but you can, you can do that. For instance, just here in the last couple of days, there's been another study that came out that illustrated that within eight days of a mask mandate being implemented, the cases were reduced. And that was cited again by the CDC and those are the individuals that I'd like to consider to be, as well as our own medical providers here in Sioux Falls, the very people that we rely on and will willingly go to when we do have a medical need. I'm going to rely on their recommendations. So, Mr. Greco, if you could put up a slide, because there's been talk also about goalposts moving. If you can look down at the bottom of the slide, you can see that, this is from the second reading, the first second reading that we had on this topic back in November. And this is the why, and somebody had asked that question. It's about public safety, it was about hospital bed capacity, keeping businesses operating, keeping employees working so the businesses could operate, and keeping our kids in school. It's true that during that time, the hospital bed capacity was stretched to its limits, but that doesn't mean that I put any less stock in these other, the health, the safety and health of the community or those other items. the safety and health of the community or those other items there. Those have been the reasons. Uh, so I, I do not believe we have moved the goalposts. And as I stated last week, we are, and Counselor Brecky mentioned it, uh, tonight as well. We do recognize that conditions are improving now and boy, I hope they continue to improve. And I really do, despite the fact that there are variants out there. And that's another, that's one of the reasons why we are seeking to move this just until the point we move from 1D to 1E. And by the way, it is the South Dakota Department of Health that makes that decision. It's not the city department of health. It is the South Dakota Department of Health that will make that decision. None of us up here have a say in that, in that matter. And when they do make that, it's, this will go away. Quite frankly, since the federal government, uh, made teachers eligible for their vaccines, I was somewhat wondering if we would be moving to that point prior to this meeting. And I can tell you, if we had, I would have withdrawn this item because it would have made no sense to move forward. Because it clearly states that it sunsets, that it ends when we move, uh, to 1E. None of us, none of us here had a playbook for how to operate within a pandemic. Boy, I wish it was easy as that. You know, we have to rely on the best information that's available at the time. And as I mentioned in the beginning, there's an abundance of it. And I have relied on the information that brought me to the point that I am this evening. And I, I hope, again, I thank you for coming this evening very much. I thank you. I, I, but I do hope that my colleagues are willing to support this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any final discussion on this item before we call on a vote here? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please, Tom.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
No.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
No.
No.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
No.
Selberg?
All right. So that item ends in a tie, uh, at four to four. So, uh, that, that puts it on to me, uh, and I, we just want to make a couple of comments tonight. I obviously was hoping not to get in this position. This is not the mayor's mandate. And so a lot of times people will assume that the actions of this body, this will be called the mayor's mandate going forward. But, uh, this is the council's decision. If I had my druthers, we would have just let this expire. But we're at the five yard line of this, this battle with, with COVID. Can I, can I just finish, please? Counselor Kylie made some, uh, great points about our vaccination schedule and where we sit with our vaccination schedule. We have a mask mandate on the books that has a penalty, no penalty for non-compliance. But the turnout tonight is, is very telling. At the rate at which we're vaccinating right now, uh, if this would pass, we would only probably have this mandate on the books for maybe a couple of weeks, to be totally honest with you. And if you think you're over it, let me tell you, these, uh, these eight folks are, uh, and this guy really is. So I, I feel bad for those of you who had bad experiences on, on this in our community and hatred and vitriol. And I'd like to think it was just the masks. But it's symptomatic of a larger dialogue chasm we have in our community right now. All right. It's not just these. It's social justice. It's the presidential election. It's the way we talk to each other. It's social media. It's all these things. And if you think that mandating or not mandating a piece of cloth will all of a sudden return us to civil dialogue, that's not going to happen. And that's, that's tough because it's been a challenging year. I also am a father. I have three young kids. Fourteen, excuse me, fifteen, uh, twelve and eight. Uh, they're over this. What you're seeing tonight is indicative of just a rising temperature, uh, in our community. And I know there's, there's a desire to put me on the hot seat tonight, um, by, by how this has gone down. I will say that, um, I'm going to have some damage repair to do based on my vote here. E- either way, because, uh, how emotional this is. But I will say this, my first, uh, I will make an apology. Uh, and that's going to be to Counselor Kylie because I am going to vote differently than we discussed, Counselor Kylie. And I am going to, um, need to ask for some grace and forgiveness on that because Counselor Kylie approached me on this ordinance and asked if, if I had, uh, his back and support on this. And where things have transpired, especially, uh, what I've heard tonight and the rate at which we're going through the vaccination schedule right now, extending this ordinance puts a mask mandate in place for two more weeks. But I think the ancillary damage of, of that two additional weeks, just based on the temperature that I'm seeing here tonight, could be worse. And so to our healthcare partners, um, in the room, they've been our allies in this and I am not an expert. Uh, I have relied so heavily on these guys. I mean, they have been incredible allies. And they both support masking. They say masking helps. It helps mitigate the spread. It helps slow the spread. Uh, and they are right. And even if this doesn't pass, uh, I still feel that there's going to be a lot of masking in this community. In fact, there's a resolution on the agenda in a little bit that's encouraging us to continue with those, those steps. But because of all that, I am going to be voting against this tonight and, um, this item will end up failing, uh, five to four. And for that, and I would ask that you don't applause because there's nothing happy about this. This is not good. There's nothing good when I give a guy my word and I give another guy my word. And based on what I feel is best for our community right now, I go against my word and I'm doing that right now. You're watching it play out and it's very tough. And this has been a very, very challenging year. And so I'm going to close with this and then we're going to move on to the next item. We need to start being kind to people. We need to stop, we need to stop dividing our community over political affiliations, over religious affiliations, over who won the election, over the efficacy of masks, over these wedge issues that one of our speakers talked about his faith and I really get a chance to do that. But these are wedge issues that are being used to drive our community apart and we need to get past that. So that's my task to you all, is that you please do that. And this is a heavy vote for me tonight. I'm, I'm going to have a hard time sleeping tonight, but my vote is a no, so this item will fail five to four. Next item. Please move on to the next item.
Item 12. A resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 013688-2021, Track 1, Eichmann's Edition, sponsors the mayor.
Good evening, Jeff.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We have four annexations tonight. They're in all four quadrants. They are all petitioned annexations by the property owners, so they requested to come into the city of Sioux Falls. This first one is down in the southwest part of Sioux Falls. It is actually requested by city staff. Come on.
Are you ready to come to bed?
And it is right of way on 69th Street and Beal Avenue and it is less than an acre of land.
Jeff, I can forward the slides for you. Put it on my computer.
It's just less than an acre of ground and it's just public right of way. That's it.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item here? All right, Counselors, you have any questions for Jeff on this? Counselor Sale, go ahead.
Uh, Jeff, my question would be, how could you get everybody else's PowerPoint to work, but you failed with your own? What, is the battery dead?
Um, yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other, thanks for enlightening the mood here. This is good. Any other questions? All right. We'll, uh, we'll look for a motion on it, please.
Second Erickson.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson, approve this item and any final discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, Tom.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes, uh, seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 13, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 013691-2021, Track 1, Northeast Quarter Edition, private applicant Harrisburg School District.
Thank you. So this is in the southeast. It's at 69th and Southeastern. So this is 34 acres and this is owned by the Harrisburg School District. This is where they'll put their next middle school. They've owned the land for quite a while. Um, they are just now annexing it into the city of Sioux Falls. And so at this point, they have access to Southeastern Drive and they will be developing a public school on this property.
All right. Thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public want to speak on this topic tonight? Counsel, any questions for Jeff on this one? Counselor Starr?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so we're bringing this in with the Crox zoning or will there be zoning that follows? It's on the agenda?
No.
No, but it will.
The Planning Commission, once they annex it in the city of Sioux Falls, then it's in the city. So then they can bring forward a rezoning to Planning Commission and then the rezoning will come forward to city council after. But it has to be in city limits before they can act on it. Yep.
Any other questions for Jeff here? All right, the per motion?
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson. Any, uh, discussion on this? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer? Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 14, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 013810-2021, Benson's Edition, private applicant Sioux Falls Development Foundation.
You can see this one is off the map. Um, this is in the northwest. So this is 55 acres owned by the Development Foundation. And this will be the extension of one of the new economic development partners that we have just coming in. So they're actually on the land that's already in the city of Sioux Falls, but they needed a little bit additional land to do their, their right of way to get out onto Marion Road. So I contacted all the adjacent and abutting property owners up in this area to notify them. I think I got two phone calls just asking what it was in regards to. But this is again petitioned annexation by the Development Foundation.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public want to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, any questions for Jeff on this item? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Jeff, tell me, what's in our comprehensive plan? How far north do we plan on annexing and what's kind of the, you know, because this one takes us that way. What, what are we thinking? How far we'll go before we get to Brookings or?
Yeah, Tom, can I ask you to go back to that one slide? That's fine right there. So we show on our comprehensive plan to go up to 258th.
Okay.
So we showed to go up to that. Crocs is currently showing to go down to 258th and we're communicating with their mayor at this time. And we have continually for years about where that boundary is at. The real issue on both of those discussions is how is it going to be served? Because at some point you have to be able to get utilities to the property owners. Because the long answer to that is either one of those property owners or any of them would come to either community and go, I want to be in your community. And if they come to the city of Sioux Falls and we go, yeah, but we can't service you, well then why would we annex them? So it's, should be the same for any adjacent community. If that community goes, yeah, we'll take you, but by the way, we can't give you services, they should not annex that property.
Well, we usually end up on the opposite end of that where they're already close enough using our services and not inside that we haven't annexed them. So it, it probably works both ways by the time we're done, but that answers my question. Thank you.
Any other questions for Jeff? Look for a motion here.
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson on this item. Any discussion amongst the council here? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Next item.
Item 15, a resolution including certain contiguous territory within the corporate limits of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Annexation 013782-2021, Schwaler Edition, sponsors the mayor.
So this is in the northeast part of town. It's 1.95 acres. And it is the last house, the remnant that is part of our public safety training facility. So if you go to the next exhibit, you can see we've already annexed all the additional property at previous city council meetings, but there was existing single family home on this property that we'd been negotiating with and they'd already agreed to sell it to us. But now that we, as the city of Sioux Falls, own it, we have just now annexed it in to the city of Sioux Falls.
All right, thanks, Jeff. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counselors, any questions for Jeff here?
Move approval?
Second Erickson.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson, approve item 15. Any discussion here, counsel? All right, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Item 16?
Item 16, a resolution approving the release of a permanent roadway easement and a budding permanent utility easement located in Lot 1 of Nick's subdivision in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of Section 14, Track 100 North, Range 50 West, 5th Prime Meridian, Lincoln County, South Dakota, private applicant Kevin Smith on behalf of Grand Prairie LLC.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Travis Larson with the City Engineering Department, bringing forth a resolution to, uh, release a permanent roadway easement and adjacent 10-foot utility easement that was intentionally, originally intentionally going to be 77th Street, which was redirected north through development. No facilities are located within the permanent roadway easement or permanent utility easement. And it was found during the title research by Land Surveying, uh, Engineering Request Your Support and Approval.
All right, thanks, Travis. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, any questions here for Travis?
Move approval?
All right.
Second Erickson.
Motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson to approve. Any discussion here, counsel? All right, let's take a vote on it.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes eight to zero. Item 17?
Item 17, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, sponsors the mayor, those being Sue Rouse and Glenn Severson to the Board of Ethics.
All right, Sue or Glenn here tonight by chance or not? We will, uh, look for any public input. Come on up, sir.
Greetings again. I hope your evening's doing all right.
Greetings again. I hope your evening's doing all right. It's been kind of a rough one for everybody. But I'm here to talk briefly about Agenda Item 17. The PowerPoint's a little wrong. I think the Agenda Item was changed. The Ethics Board appointments, it's going to be important. So the Ethics Advisory Board should be able to provide guidance on four topics. Is it legal? Is it ethical? And this should be applicable to, you know, things that happened in the past and things that we're thinking about doing in the future. That's what an Ethics Board should do. So the board members should be able to live up to this mandate. They should be able to promote transparency. And in particular, we need to look at, I hate to bring it up again, but we need to look at some questionable practices that were written about by the Ethics Board way back in August. And apparently, there's some problems with third-party pay to travel. I don't want to deal with it. Okay. So if somebody had made a mistake, I do that all the time. The thing to do is to own up to it and say, "Sorry, I blew it." And we'll try to make it better. A cover-up is worse than the initial problem. And I think that the Ethics Board needs to investigate the issue I put up on the previous slide so that we can have more faith in our government. But the real issue is that we need to make sure that the jury is not biased. Juries are all important in the judicial process, and that's kind of what the Ethics Board is. So what I'm asking that you should do is to interview the Ethics Board's candidates, and there's only two of them, to make sure that they're, that they're open to actually those four principles that I brought up. And that's really all I have to say.
All right.
But if you don't, if you don't make that investigation clear, then you have an Ethics Board that might be unethical in and of itself, and then you never really know what's going on in government. So that's my recommendation.
All right, thanks for your comments. Anyone else here to speak on this one? All right, look for a motion to approve these two folks. Move approval?
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Erickson to approve item 17. Any discussion here?
Mr. Mayor?
Councillor Starr, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. These are two great appointments. Mrs. Roust has a long career of, of public service and has served well on the Ethics Board, and her getting a second term, I think, is well deserved. Judge Severson brings an incredible resume and someone who is wanting to continue public service. I think it's remarkable. He could have easily said no or not applied. So I think he will bring a, an attitude and a spirit of service to this board that will be, our citizens will benefit from. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for these two candidates agreeing to serve.
All right, any other discussion here? All right, let's vote on this item, please. Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that item passes eight to zero. Next item, please. Item 18, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, outlining the expectations for the people of Sioux Falls to take action to reduce transmission of the virus that causes COVID-19. Sponsors the mayor. All right, thanks. I'll, I'll be speaking to this item. Do I got to pass the gavel, I suppose, to Councillor Chair Nitzer? You'll chair this item. And I'll be speaking to this resolution. This is a resolution that we've had in place. Again, resolutions are different than ordinances for, I believe you all know that, but these are recommendations that this council sees prudent based on the current situation we're in and probably are even more important, given the mask mandate now that appears will be lifted now this week. Really, what we're doing is encouraging the practices that we all know are really critical and important right now in our community, regarding distancing, regarding hand washing, regarding recommending mask wearing. You'll still see me wearing a mask. It's just going to be part of my DNA for a little while. And I think we're going to continue to recommend that others do that as well, but again, not mandated. Section 5 has changed a little bit as well. We're, we're really just encouraging people to abide by the requirements of this Safer Sioux Falls pledge that we developed with the, with the Chamber of Commerce. Those recommendations in there still make a lot of sense. They're still in line with what the city wants to see. Essentially, this resolution would expire when we rescind EO 218, this emergency ordinance. Now, some people have said, you know, "Well, when will this extend?" Trust me, I want to get this thing over with as soon as possible. I don't want to be under this emergency order anymore. And when we say emergency order, really, that just gives us certain powers. If we need to call a special meeting, we're not saying there's a critical emergency. It's a state that we're in as a council, given this unique time. My hope is that very soon, we're going to be rescinding this and not under EO 218 any longer. And so that's the resolution. I would really ask for your support tonight on this to make sure we still send a strong message of good mitigation and good mask wearing and other things in the community, especially given how we will be rescinding that mask ordinance on Sunday. So I will certainly take any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there anyone who'd like to speak to this item? Come forward, please.
I'd like to thank the mayor. I think he had a tough vote earlier. I think that's, this is the perfect, this is the perfect win for everybody. We don't, we don't have the mandate. We're not telling people they have to do this anymore. But I've, I've said from, I've said from day one, I think, all we really need to do is work with the mayor, give him some direction. And I think the mayor had it right from the get-go. I think I would encourage you guys to support the mayor on this, because I think, I think the mayor does listen. And I, I brought up Section 5 earlier, and I think you can, that shows 100%. I, I would support the mayor on this. So I would encourage you to vote, vote yes and encourage the mayor, because I think he's doing everything he can, and keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Others? Welcome.
Travis Malner again. I wasn't going to talk on this, but then when I was hearing you speak about it, I asked the Lord for truth again. But that's one of the things that's sort of I key in on, is when absolute language is used to describe things that aren't absolute or aren't known. You said, for example, you said, "We all know that these things help." But that's not the truth, because there's lots of conflicting studies out there about that. That means that the scientific community doesn't know. The experts don't know. There's all kinds of experts out there. So I just want to point that out and encourage the, or discourage, or encourage the evaluation of those statements of absoluteness when it comes to things that are not absolute. That's all I wanted to say about that. So, thanks.
Thank you, Travis.
Hello, Laura Hubble again. I just kind of wanted to, again, welcome you to a debate. I just had somebody in the back room there anxious about having a debate about all these issues. You yourself said there's so much information out there. I think we should have one place where we can actually get all that meted out. I would have no problem talking to the doctors about this. I've actually taught nurses on, on immunology, and I'm surprised at their response if they think that, if they know immunology and bacteriology. I'm kind of surprised at their responses. But I, I do not, sorry, I don't like this resolution because the whereas's, I think, should be more, more accurate. They're all debatable, okay? The World Health Organization, I don't like that place. I don't like the CDC. I don't think they're altruistic. I think they're bureaucratic bastions for the left. And it's, we don't have a, and number two, whereas, we don't have a novel virus. This is a coronavirus. We've had this virus here for 60 years. Granted, it might be a variation, but it's not a novel virus. At first, we thought it was. Okay, and then we have an, we have an emergency order in place, which I don't think is even legal, if that's the right word, constitutional, whatever, because our codified law doesn't allow for it unless we have actually used up all of our resources with a disaster, I'm sorry, the disaster declaration. We haven't used up all of our resources, spent them. So we really should not have a disaster declaration. Basically, here's one that says that for the health, we should wear masks for our health. It's not for our health. This is, this is all political. And then it says, "Now therefore, be resolved by the city." The city by, and it says, on the second paragraph from the bottom, it says, "By using all known and available mitigation measures." No, you don't. You don't know all these mitigation measures. When I graduated in the sciences, I have two degrees, one in nursing and one in the science of biology. When I graduated biology, I thought I was going to know all the answers in science and biology. What I found is that I knew very little. Every question I asked opened probably 10 more questions. There is no such thing as settled science. I have a whole lecture on that. The science is never settled. The change is actually from year to year. And I think that we should have an honest debate on this. I'd love to have you come there. I'd love to see who you're talking to. I'd love to give you more people to talk to, more people who could help you in, in your decisions and can guide you than just the CDC. And I, and I'm not impressed with the Department of Health either. I don't think that they have the education or the experience to be mandating what they do. And I would just like to, like I said, invite you to a debate to get a broader spectrum of people before we start making these mandates. Thank you.
Thanks, Laura. Others?
Tim Stanga. First, I was to call the deplorable, then a Neanderthal, now an intimidator. The only intimidator I know is Dale Earnhardt. He was the intimidator. I'm hoping that the people of Sioux Falls are really watching tonight on how politics works, because there was a lot of politics going on tonight. And I'm hoping that people really have their eye open, because there's an election coming up. And I think it's 2022. There's a few people that are going to be reelected, and there's some people that need to go. And it's not hard to figure out which ones need to go. It's just amazing on how we got to do, we got to play politics on people's lives. It wasn't a Republican-Democratic issue. It was just a common sense issue. Another thing I tell people, I never watch our media. I never watch any Sioux Falls media, because why? When I'm called a name on TV, the media doesn't go after it. But if somebody else said it, they'd be on it right now. The media of Sioux Falls is told what to say, how to say it, and when to say it. They don't tell the truth. And I tell people, never, never watch the media in Sioux Falls.
Thank you, Tim. Anybody else for public input on this item? Come forward.
All right, well, good evening. I'm Tyler Bonnage. And as for Resolution 18, so just a little testimonial about myself. I don't think, people such as myself, I don't believe that those who are against the mask mandate are necessarily monolithic in its totality of how we view things. If I was intellectually convinced that masks were efficacious towards mitigating the spread of COVID-19, I'd be, I'd be wearing one right now. But given the data of what I was at least able to express, and I know this is kind of a fallen platform because we don't have cross-examination, you know, like I brought up the Norway one, you rebutted that, but we don't have the opportunity to kind of go back and forth in what that means. But in terms of expectations for the city and the good of our neighbor and how to protect the elderly populace, those with comorbidities, I'm right there with that endeavor. And so, again, I appeal to and I encourage, when we do outline and want to inspire our citizens in Sioux Falls, to consider the Great Barrington Declaration. Like the mayor and everyone else has appealed to, from Dr., I think it's Basel, Basil, and then other people who work in our area, they have the degrees. We have the virologists, the immunologists, the epidemiologists. And at the same time, I also appeal to the fact that I, I too have people in those fields of study that are saying, for instance, those who are not vulnerable shouldn't immediately be allowed to assume life is normal. And if you're sick, stay home, wash hands. And these are mantras and things that has been established from this council. It just, it makes sense. We should have been doing that prior. But they're, they endorse things, they're against lockdowns and mask mandates, given the data I had mentioned from the influenza-like illness of pre-COVID times to COVID times, when we consider the first controlled study showing that there wasn't a difference in how masks impacted that actual study. And I understand Kylie had appealed to the CDC. Again, I, I believe that there is data that can be contentious and, I guess, a good argument against the convictions I share, but this is just an example. So the CDC said in Arizona, now this is from the CDC.gov, I, sorry, I don't have it on here. I'll just, I'm going to kind of look up here. So it said, 151% of cases went up after the stay-at-home order was lifted, so that's not good. Cases rose. This is certified, this is codified in the CDC website. And they said then, 75% in cases following sustained prevention efforts across the state, it went down 75%, which was mask requirements, limited public events, enclosure of certain businesses. So I want to assess the data, because I too love my grandma. I want what's best for everyone around me. Again, if, if I was convinced that masks were efficacious, I would be like, I don't know if I care what Justice Scalia said about a certain thing, if this is protecting someone by all means. So again, I would really struggle with that. However, given the data I was able to present in the first one to even now, when that CDC thing was established, because we live in a microwave culture, we need data, we need stats right away. That can be helpful, but we got to look more of a telescopic view than microscope, like, and nothing against Councillor Kylie here. But again, I didn't find this on the 36th search result of a Google thing that I found. I just clicked to the, the deep, deep dark corner of the internet to find this. This is, again, sustainable data gathered from the CDC. When that statistic went, showed that 75% of cases went down during the implementation, it was at this point. Now, the case has actually skyrocketed, and it actually went up 1,272%. And the reason why, again, harkening back to that, and this is, it goes to the point of 18. I'm not trying to conflate 18 with the other thing that just passed, but there's some correlation. The masks give people a sense of protection they don't have. And again, I, I have Republican convictions, but I appeal to Michael Osterholm, who's part of the Biden administration. So without getting too partisan in this, I'm still appealing to what he has to say, and he was saying this back in June. It gives people a sense of protection they don't have. And then they, in thinking that they have it, they subject themselves to situations that they otherwise shouldn't be in. And so that's why you see the spike in cases in all these areas. And so I think for, from a Sioux Falls standpoint, and what we can do for our city, for our county, is that for you nine to consider the Great Barrington Declaration and to adopt these principles and implement them and encourage our citizens to follow along. But I do think that it is a mistake to continue pushing masks as an effective mitigator to COVID-19, so.
Thank you, Tyler. Perfect timing. Anybody else for public input? Come forward, please.
Hello, my name is James Katz. I've been a resident of Sioux Falls for about 13 years now. And a lot of stats and figures have been thrown out lately. And I agree with somebody who stated that you can find the facts you're looking for, if you dig hard enough. I used to write papers in college, and then I'd find the sources that agreed with me and quote them at the end of the paper. So I'm not going to speak to any of that, but just to give my own personal experience with it, I apologize for my stammering. I'm not a public speaker by any means, but I have two neighbors that live on either side of me. On one side, it's two ladies, probably late 60s, early 70s. And they've chosen to isolate themselves from the community. So if, if you go there, you got to stand back 10 feet, have masks on. And they've had chairs in their front lawn with people 10 feet back while they sit in their chair, and then they talk back and forth. But hardly, they don't go out at all. And I respect that, because the older of the two ladies, they're sisters, she has a breathing problem. She's had it for years. So she is definitely, they need to protect themselves. On the other side, back in November, I had a lady move in. She bought the house from the Twin Cities. She came. I think she's 89 years old. I wanted to be neighborly to her, so when they're moving in in November, I knocked on the door, introduced myself. I stood well back because I I stood well back because I didn't want to offend them if they were, you know, scared of the virus and things like that. I don't like wearing the mask myself. It's hard for me to breathe, but. And it was interesting because she invited me into her house and showed me every single room in the house. And I'd never been in the house. I'd lived next door for seven years, six years. And I'm still, I was still unsure about her thoughts on it, but I decided in December to be neighborly, so I told my boys to run over there and just see if she wants to come to supper. And she was so excited to come to supper. She thought it was great. So, my boys go over there. Once or twice a week, they bring her Valentine's candy, they write her cards, and she absolutely loves it. She is so excited to see them. My other neighbors, I told my, my boys, my oldest is seven, and I got a five and a four-year-old, and then a 14-month-old daughter. But I tell them, the neighbors on the other side, just give them their space. Don't go up in their lawn, don't touch their stuff because they're scared of it, and they should be. So, they have the right to be. Because of my profession, I'm in Menards six days a week, just buying stuff to fix things up. And they have a rule where you have to wear a mask. I don't like wearing a mask, but because they've built up a business, which I like to frequent, and I love going there, I put on the mask and I go in. I respect that. Even if after the mandate, they don't, they still require masks, I'll put on a mask and I'll go in because they offer a service that I want. I've been to two Hy-Vs since the mask mandate. The one on the Empire Mall says it's strongly recommended you have masks. About 10% of the people don't. The one on Minnesota requires you, and they'll ask you to put a mask on. So, I frequent the Empire one more often, but I always carry a mask in there in case they ask me to put it on. And then, also, I'm a property manager, so I show rental properties to people. And about, I kept track of it, just under a fourth of the people that come for showings have masks on. If they do, I stand well back. I'll put a mask on if they request it. If not, I'm upfront with them. But I thought it was interesting to, this morning, I shook hands with two people. One I've known for years, one I just met this morning. And it just struck me with how unique shaking hands is these days. It's something I used to love to do because, you know, it's the way men greet and size each other up by a handshake. But now, it's become less commonplace, and it's kind of a victim of this. But I guess I'm rambling, and I apologize for that. But what I'm saying is, yes, we should wash our hands. And if it makes people feel better, I wear a mask. If they don't require it, I don't wear a mask. So, I try to size people up, and I try not to offend people. And I don't talk bad, I've heard people on both sides that have talked bad about each other, and I apologize for that. So, I don't believe that's right. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the floor. Any comments or motions? Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. I will support this. Obviously, I will. I mean, I was in support of the previous ordinance. I'm certainly going to support this for many of the same reasons. You know, the question's about the variants. We just don't know yet. Some have already proven to be more contagious, and it's still not certain about the effectiveness of the vaccines with the variants. And soon, there's going to be variants of variants of variants. So, there's a lot about uncertainty there. So, that's one of the reasons why I will support this. Another is, we're still not where we, maybe we're close to where we need with, need to be with the vaccination. So, we still need to move along with the vaccination so that hopefully, we can get up to that 80% vaccinated, and that would include individuals who had previously had COVID so that we can reach that herd immunity that we seek. And it's still uncertain, you know, whether individuals that are vaccinated, whether or not you can transmit this disease. So, it is very important that we continue to follow these guidelines, whether you've been vaccinated or not. It's my responsibility to support or to protect other members in the public from what, even though I'm vaccinated and I'm not going to get sick, the virus could possibly still be spread by me. We don't know yet. So, until we do, I would encourage everybody to follow these guidelines and standards. Let me just address a little bit what occurred previously, if I may.
Please.
Obviously, I'm disappointed with the result. Am I mad? Absolutely not. Sometimes, you're on the prevailing side of issues. Other times, you're not. I try not to break it down in wins and losses because it's that very thing that pits one person against another, which was widely expressed here this evening. So, while I'm disappointed, I am committed to continue to work with every one of my colleagues on this council. Because if you burn a bridge, someday, you may need to cross that bridge. If you do things that make the gap wider between individuals, then it just ensures that nothing's ever going to get another, nothing's ever going to happen. So, I elect not to widen that gap. I will continue, while disappointed, I will continue to work with my colleagues on this council on not only this issue, but issues coming in the future for the betterment of this community. That's why I ran for this office.
Thank you. Others? Comments or motions? Motions to approve?
Move approval. Second. Kylie?
Counselor Selberg moves approval. Kylie seconds. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That item passes eight to zero.
All right, counselors. Any new business to take care of tonight? All right. We're at our general public input portion of our agenda tonight. Remember, input in this portion will last no more than three minutes per person. And during general public input, the public is welcome to speak on topics that we didn't discuss earlier on in the agenda, as we already received comments on those items. So, anyone who has public input can come forward at this time. All right. I'm not seeing any. Trifecta. Come back.
I have one last sort of thing to say. I don't know, maybe this can be fun, maybe not. You probably won't do it. I apologize for the heckling earlier when people say stuff. I know that can be frustrating, especially in front of a large crowd. So, feel free to heckle me while I'm saying what I'm going to say. And I'll try to keep rambling on until no one has any more heckling to do. But no, that's, that's, I had something else. Oh, I do appreciate your comments, your final comments there. Yeah, that was actually very striking. It was very noble to bring that up, especially in these, in these conditions. And I really appreciate you being honest about the promise you made earlier, Mr. Mayor, and also listening. Felt like you listened anyway, and that changed your mind, so appreciate that. So, thank you.
All right. Thanks, Travis. Anyone else tonight for public input? All right. Look for a motion to adjourn us.
Move to adjourn.
Second. Nicer.
Motion by Kylie, seconded by Nicer, to adjourn us. Let's take a vote on that, please, Tom.
Councilmember Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Recky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nicer?
Yes.
Selberg?
All right. We are adjourned, 8:00. Have a good night, everybody.